Okay. Board members, welcome back to our November 5th and 6th meeting. We need to reestablish a forum, so Brooks is going to call the call.
Member Sun.
Here.
Vice President Strauss.
Here.
Member Rucker.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Member Patil Bronson.
Here.
Member Navo.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Glover Woods.
Here.
Member Fatah.
Here.
President Darling Hammond.
Here.
Member Burr.
Here.
Everyone's present and accounted for.
Okay. We are now reconvening the public session. In closed session, the board discussed following cases. And or took action. The Martinez versus Newsom case and today's fresh start for Singlewood USD, LA CLE, CDE, and SBE. I'm going to start with our announcements. For public input, members of the public wishing to dial in for public comments should view the live stream of the meeting to know at what time we will ask for public comment for each item on the agenda. Public comment may be provided by dialing the phone number and participant access code, which will be posted at each of those junctures. And then again, following each of the operator's prompts. Upon dialing in, callers will be added to a caller queue. The operator will notify callers when it is their turn to provide public comments. We will also ask the public calling in for public comment to please turn down the speaker volume of their computers if they are following the live feed to avoid an echoing effect. Public comment will be limited to one minute for each speaker. Board members, please mute your microphones when not speaking. Keep your cameras on at all times, except during the scheduled breaks, to ensure that we maintain a forum throughout today's virtual meeting. For each item on the agenda, there will be an opportunity for you as board members to raise your hand using the Zoom participant window if you would like to ask a question or make a comment. And we're going to begin with item 13. Item 13 is to provide an information overview on the CDE's implementation of Assembly Bills 1505 and 1507. And this will be specifically as it pertains to the new review standard and process of the State Board of Education and the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools in the Hearing of Appeals for the Establishment and Renewal of Charter Schools. And this item will be presented by Stephanie Farland from the CDE. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning. Good to see everyone. Good morning, President Darling Hammond, board members, Chief Deputy Gregson. It's good to be here today. The purpose of this presentation, as President Darling Hammond just mentioned, is to provide you with an overview of the impact of Assembly Bills 1505 and 1507. And we will be emphasizing the SBE's role in the charter appeal process. This is an affirmation item only, so there will no action today needed or taken by the State Board of Ed. So today's objectives, the focus of our overview today will be general overview of 1505. As you know, there are a lot of components to it. It was a major overhaul of charter school law, so we'll be touching on a lot of the components, the new components, and then focusing a bit of time on just the SBE's role. So we'll be talking about the SBE appeals and review standard, the renewal criteria and performance criteria that is new under AB 1505, including the consideration of verified data, role of the department and the ACCS, the new role with appeals under 1505. And we'll also be talking about the requirements for non-classroom-based schools and treat as continuing charter schools. And we will get into a lot of that detail as we go along today. I will not be the only one presenting today. It's a group effort. There's a lot of information here to present. I'm sure you saw that in the long PowerPoint. So I do have staff from the Charter Schools Division here today, Carrie Lopes and the Kenah Huey, and Cindy Kazanis from our AMAR division will be presenting some of the data information. So over the course of the last year, I guess it's been a year since the law has been signed, CDE and State Board staff have really been laying the groundwork for how 1505 will be implemented here at the department and with the State Board of Education. And so we have been busy laying that foundation. There are still many components still missing, and we will talk about some of those as we move along. We've been taking these, the implementation of 1505, sort of in chunks. You know, there were pieces that needed to be taken care of and done, you know, over the course of this last year. So you'll see that we have done a lot, we have implemented a lot, but we still have quite a bit to do. And some of the questions you may have later, some of the definitions and processes that are outlined in 1505, we may not have answers for today because we're working on regulations, and some of that will come out in January. But we hope to provide as much information as possible today. So implementation efforts. The department, the department has actually done quite a bit over the last year, and it has been a group effort. All of this did not come out of the Charter Schools Division. It is definitely a department-wide and State Board staff-wide work that has gone into everything that's been done. So we have, obviously, you've seen your SBE information memorandum. We created one and submitted one in October of 2019 and also in June 2020. And those were just overview memos on 1505. The department has created a Charter Schools Division newsletter that will go out quarterly. The first one went out a couple of weeks ago. We're very excited about that because it's an opportunity for us to share information in real time with our stakeholders in the field. We will continue to update and post new information on that, and that can be found on the Charter Schools website on the CDE page. We've also posted, in terms of technical support and assistance, we have posted new forms online that will assist charter schools in submitting appeals to the State Board of Ed and will also be used by the Department of Ed staff to process those appeals. We're very excited about those and happy to say that we were able to share those with stakeholders before they were posted to gather any input needed. As I mentioned a moment ago, the department is in the process of developing regulatory language to be presented to the State Board at its January meeting. We have reached out to stakeholders twice in this process. Once in the spring and again just last week, where we held Zoom meetings to solicit feedback from stakeholders on the various components of 1505 that might need regulations. As part of that stakeholder group were several charter operators, CCSA, CSDC, several district authorizers, including LA Unified, and several counties of offices of education, CTA, and other union organizations. We had a very diverse group of stakeholders, and we received some very thoughtful feedback, which we will be reviewing as we continue to write regulatory language. Oops, I skipped over, didn't need to. Department, the new requirement of the verified data list and aggregate enrollment data under 1505 is, well, you'll hear the verified data item in the next item. But we do have a new requirement that allows chartering authorities to request from the Department of Ed aggregate data reflecting pupil enrollment patterns of a charter school for purposes of renewal. This information may be used to support a determination as to whether the charter school is serving all pupils who wish to attend and identifying evidence to support the finding. Part of that data that can be requested is already posted on our website, and we have also sent several authorizers the remaining enrollment data that needs to be requested. So that is ongoing right now. If authorizers have charters going through the renewal process, they can request from the Department of Ed the aggregate enrollment data from those charters, and the department will send it to them. So that's very exciting, and that took a lot of work from our AMAR group to get that together. And that is live. As I mentioned earlier, stakeholder engagement opportunities. We have been engaging stakeholders. We, as I said, engaged them twice for the regulatory process. And we also have had several meetings, several stakeholder meetings for the verified data process, which we'll go into more detail about that in the next item. We've been sending out some of our postings beforehand to stakeholders to make sure that we're getting it right and that what we're putting out is useful for charters and authorizers in the state. And so we've been very, very happy that stakeholders have been willing to be engaged in this process. And then in terms of the implementation of tracking of the bill, the bill does require that we track how the bill is being implemented in the field and how it's being implemented up here at the state level. And we continue to have conversations here within the department and across the street in the legislature around those issues. So AB 1505, as I said, will impact various aspects of charter school law. And there are some areas that we're going to get into today, such as charter school establishments and renewals, charter school appeals, the role of the ACCS, which has been changed and will be discussed in further detail in the presentation. Geographic site and site limitations. AB 1507 prohibits a charter school from operating outside the boundaries of the district where it is authorized and requires existing charters who wish to continue operating outside the boundaries of the authorizer's district to obtain approval prior to seeking renewal from the district where the site or resource center is located. In the alternative, the charter school can submit a petition for renewal to the district where the site or resource center is located, and if approved, will be treated as a continuing school despite obtaining a new authorizer. And we're going to go into a little more detail on that later in this presentation. There are exceptions for emergencies and charter schools operated by federally recognized California Indian tribes are exempted from the restrictions. There also is a temporary prohibition on non-classroom-based charter schools that goes from January 1, 2020 to January 1, 2022. So we do have a prohibition, and during that time of this two-year period, we hope to have some conversations about non-classroom-based schools. There are new teacher credentialing requirements that have changed for charter schools. ED Code 47605 allowed flexibility with non-core, non-college preparatory teachers, but under AB 1505, that flexibility has been eliminated. The provisions apply beginning July 1, 2020. However, teachers employed in a charter school in the 2019-20 school year have until July 1, 2025 to obtain certification for their position. And as I said earlier, we are tracking the implementation of 1505. And now we are going to bring up Cindy Kazanis from AMAR, who will talk a little about some of those performance categories that we're going to get into in terms of renewals, and also talk a little bit about the process that AMAR used to come up with those renewal categories.
Good morning. Cindy Kazanis, Director of the Analysis, Measurement, and Accountability Reporting Division. And as Stephanie mentioned, we have been supporting the Charter Schools Division to implement this very large bill over the last year and a half. I would say this is really the first step for looking at charter schools renewal, the criteria for establishing the performance categories. So one thing that the law specifies is that there is a separate track for our Dashboard Alternative School Status. And building on our discussion yesterday and that great presentation from Dr. Ruiz de Velasco and others, I think it's really nice and it was a compliment to really the board's setting up the Dashboard Alternative School Status program and really the robustness of that program, that this piece of legislation actually recognizes that there needs to be a separate renewal process because these schools, as I described yesterday, for some, serve really our most vulnerable students. And they have different populations that we're looking at than our traditional schools. And so this law specifically sets aside a different renewal process that really takes off the top of all Dashboard Alternative School Status schools. So specifically, under Education Code Section 4767C7, it outlines this process and indicates that charter school authorizers shall consider the following performance on state and local indicators in the California school dashboard. Additionally, charter school authorizers must meet with the charter school during the first year of the charter school's term to mutually agree upon, or discuss, rather, alternative metrics to be considered and shall notify the charter of those alternative metrics to be used within 30 days of the meeting. So again, this is a very specified process for those schools that are considered alternative schools under the DAS program. The remainder of the schools are looking or looked at through the three performance categories that are also established in 47607. 47607 talks about performance levels and the words high performing, low performing, middle performing. We're actually sort of a work of art as we talk to those that negotiated this law on both sides of the issue. You know, we wordsmith this multiple occasions. And in doing so, we're constantly checking in with stakeholders for feedback. And so this process really began in earnest at the beginning of the year. And that's because we had to, of course, look at the dashboard. And the dashboard didn't come out until December of 2019. So in January of 2020, Jenny Singh and then her staff really spent quite a bit of time trying to look at the law, interpret the law, reinterpret the law, check for understanding with those that helped write it. And what you see before you today is really the fruits of that effort. So high performing establishes, or rather, provides presumptive renewal. If the charter school meets, they establish renewal criteria. So that's, the ED Code section is mentioned there. Low performing has the exact opposite, presumptive non-renewal. If the charter school meets the non-renewal criteria. And then there's the second review, the second look, and that's the verified data piece that we're going to take up in item 14. And then finally, middle performing, and these schools are evaluated using additional data. Again, the verified data piece. We did publicly post the data file. There was a July 1 deadline to post that data file. Ahead of that, we conducted a technical assistance webinar. And ahead of the technical assistance webinar, we met with not only the charter school organizations, but also had good conversations with Los Angeles Unified School District, who said, you know, we're going to need some extra support on how to talk about this. And so one of the flyers that I wanted to show you just briefly, it's in the item, was directly as a result of that conversation. So again, trying to provide technical assistance on how to implement this law or how to understand the data files because, well, you know, the law may not be clear. We need to make something that's tangible to actually have our LEAs and our authorizers implement. So there are additional criteria per Education Code Section 47607E that specifies a chartering authorizer may deny renewal of DAS charter schools and non-DAS charter schools in any of the three performance categories if the following occur. There's a finding that the school is unlikely to successfully implement the program due to substantial financial or governance factors, or the charter school is not serving all pupils who wish to attend. So just a couple of terminology pieces so that you understand where this list developed from. Education Code Section, again, 47607C3 specifies looking at English Language Arts, Literacy, Mathematics Results, the College Career Indicator, and the English Learner Progress Indicator. The other terminology that we needed to also define and check for understanding was around the performance of charter schools and their student groups, that they had to be compared with the statewide average on the four state academic indicators that I just mentioned on the prior slide. So our interpretation of that, and again, we did definitely check for understanding with all of the larger stakeholders, was using the status, as we do on the dashboard, as being the statewide average for academic indicators. And the reasons you can see below, we use status because the term average refers to a number, and status is much more precise than a color. And of course, we use this on the dashboard, and the field is very familiar with the word status and of course, change, which is not being discussed here. So a school can be placed, again, these are non-DAS schools, can be placed into the high, middle, or low performance categories based on two different methodologies. And again, this is really well articulated in that flyer that I just showed you. First is criterion one, so based on all the colors received for all the state indicators in the dashboard. And for that, we're looking at only school-wide data. Criterion tool is looking at the status for all academic indicators with 30 or more students. And the school-wide and student group data is considered when we use criterion two. So we created a flowchart to help describe this. This has gone through a couple iterations as well, so I'm hoping this is useful to the board and to the public. Of course, the red box at the top says non-DAS charter schools. Because again, DAS charter schools do not use this renewal process. So we're looking at traditional charter schools. The first thing we do is we look at the colors of all the state indicators. We see if anybody gets that high or that low performance piece. So actually, let me take that back. We'd like to see whether or not they have all blues and greens or all reds and oranges. So for the far-left box, you see if they achieved all blues and greens on the dashboard for those four indicators, they would have a high-performing presumptive renewal. If they had all reds and oranges, presumptive non-renewal and a possible renewal using the verified data piece. Finally, if you have a combination of blue, green, yellow, orange, and red, all of our colors on the dashboard, you move to step two. So step two starts with schools that did not meet the first criteria. So we're looking at dashboard status. We move from colors to the status. And the criterion two now puts those labels on high, low, or middle performing. So starting again on the left-hand side, school and majority of student groups who scored higher than the statewide average for distance from standard for English Language Arts on the CASP, distance from standard for mathematics on the CASP, percent prepared for the college career indicator, and percent improved in language acquisition under the English Learner Progress Indicator. Those schools would be determined to be high performing, and they'd have the presumptive renewal. Reversely, if we look at, again, school and majority of student groups who scored lower than the statewide average for all of those above, so again, distance from standard for English Language Arts, distance from standards for mathematics, percent prepared on the college career indicator, and percent improved in the language acquisition, there's a presumptive non-renewal, and they're considered low performing, and we move into that verified data piece. Majority that you will see in the next couple of slides actually fall into the middle performing. They do not meet the criterion. And they're also going to be using the verified data piece. So let me show you the results based on all schools who are eligible. I have a couple of things to note. First, the N size for this is 1,200 charter schools. We wanted to look at charter schools that have been open for two years because we need to, of course, have a color on the dashboard. And then none of the other criteria that's under Education Code, I'm sorry, I did not cite the code, but they cannot be on the differentiated assistance list. So because charter schools are treated as local educational agencies under our state system of support, they cannot be also receiving support under our differentiated assistance piece. So none of these high-performing schools fell on that list for the 1920 school year based on the 2019 dashboard. So it gets a little confusing. So the interesting thing about the results is that on that criterion one for school-wide only, there were no schools out of the 1,200 that had all reds and all oranges. There were 27 high-performing schools who received all blues and all greens. So that's the presumptive renewal for those 27 schools. We move on to criterion two, and again, looking at school-wide based on status and looking at student group results as well. And again, I forgot to mention, these are broken out by school types. So we have elementary, middle, high, K-12, and then we do the totals. So for criterion two, you see that 72 schools fall into this category. And on the high side, you have 178. And this last side brings all that data together. So the 72 low performing, I wanted to note that of those nine are currently up for renewal this year. I don't have those same figures for the middle track, but again, the high track bringing those two data points together, you have roughly 18% who fall into that category. And with that, I don't know if we're pausing for questions or we're not pausing for questions. Okay, I will turn it over to my next colleague.
Thank you, Cindy. Good morning, board members. I am Carrie Lopes, and I am representing the Charter Schools Division today. The next slides will address questions surrounding the appeals to be heard by the State Board of Education, including the standard of review, the process, and the consideration of information in order for the State Board to make a determination. These questions include: What appeals will be heard by the State Board? And how does the standard and process differ in some cases for establishment and renewal appeals? What information will be considered in the review of the appeal? What are the timelines for the appeal process? What schools are included in the board's charter portfolio? And what seven counties have jurisdiction over a single school district? For the board's reference, I do want to let you know that in attachments two and three in the item, it does list the charter schools that are authorized by the State Board along with the seven counties that have jurisdiction over a single school district. So reviewing appeal review standards. In the past, the State Board has heard appeals for establishments, renewals, and revocations of charter schools. Within the context of AB 1505, the State Board will still continue to consider the same types of appeals. However, the standard of review will be different. This slide shows the type of appeal and the standard of a review that will be applied. The first two boxes show that new and renewal petitions denied by a single district county and renewal petitions for State Board authorized schools denied at the local level will be considered under a de novo review. However, in the third box, new and renewal petitions denied by a district and county board will no longer be reviewed based on a de novo review. As State Board members recall, past petitions, regardless of the denying entity, were appealed and considered by the State Board under what we called a de novo review. The new standard of review for this type of appeal will now be determined based on abuse of discretion. Petitioners still have the option to appeal a revocation to the State Board. This type of appeal will be considered by reviewing substantial evidence and making a determination on whether to uphold the revocation or reverse the decision. So let's talk a little bit about the standard of review. In the past, the State Board's review standard was generally under the de novo review, meaning that the State Board made an independent determination regarding the petition and independently considered all of the issues previously considered by the district and the county. Remember that the State Board will still consider appeals under this standard of review if the petition is denied by a single district county or the school is currently authorized by the State Board and is denied at the local level during renewal. During the appeal process, the State Board will consider all required elements, such as the petition, the budget, any relevant academic data, or prior history and all local findings. The role of the ACCS commissioners will be to review the item, the CDE analysis and recommendation, and make a recommendation to the State Board to either approve or deny the petition. The role of the State Board will be to independently consider all of the issues previously considered by the district and county and make a determination to either approve or deny the petition. This process would be similar to your most recent experience at the July board meeting. Abuse of discretion is a new term and a new standard of review that has been delegated solely to the State Board. An abusive discretion review changes the information that the State Board will consider, the role of the ACCS, and the role of the State Board. Remember that the State Board will consider appeals that fall into this standard for charter schools that are denied by the local, district, and county board. The ACCS will review the item and the CDE recommendation and will recommend to the State Board to either hear or summarily deny the appeal. Additionally, the ACCS has the option to make a no recommendation. Additionally, the ACCS has the option to make a no recommendation. During the appeal process, the State Board will review the documentary record and decide whether there was an abuse of discretion by the school, district, and/or county Board of Education. The State Board has the option to reverse a local decision. Additionally, keep in mind that with this change in reviewing appeals, the State Board could potentially hear an appeal under a de novo review and an appeal under an abuse of discretion review at the same Board meeting. So we've had an opportunity to discuss changes to the appeal process, but I wanted to spend a moment talking about changes in the findings for a denial of an establishment of a school. During a review, local districts and counties will still need to make written factual findings in order to deny a petition. These generally include an unsound educational program, that the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program, the petition does not contain a reasonably comprehensive description of the fifteen required elements, or the petition does not contain the required signatures and affirmations. However, AB fifteen oh five has added the following two new findings for consideration. The first one being, the school is demonstrably unlikely to serve the interest of the entire community in which the school proposes to locate. That's the first new finding. The second is, the school district is not positioned to absorb the fiscal impact of the charter school. Also, keep in mind that these two findings may be applied to an existing charter school that is requesting a material revision in order to either expand operations or by adding sites or grade levels. Let's take a closer look at these two findings. Community impact makes a determination that the school is demonstrably unlikely to serve the interest of the entire community in which the school proposes to locate. When making this finding, the following may be considered: The fiscal impact of the proposed school. The extent to which the proposed school would substantially undermine existing services, academic offerings, or programmatic offerings. Whether the school duplicates a program currently offered by the school district. Fiscal impact makes a determination that the school district is not positioned to absorb the fiscal impact of the charter school. A school's district satisfies this criteria if the following is met: The district is under the authority of a state trustee or administrator. The district is in negative certification. Or the district is in qualified certification and the county superintendent and fiscal crisis and management assistance team, or FICMAT, certify that the approval of the charter school would result in the district having a negative certification.
So next, I'd like to turn it over to Stephanie Farland, who's going to be explaining more in detail the role of the California Department of Education, the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools, and the State Board.
Thanks, Carrie. So Carrie has gone over a lot of the detail about the new types of appeals. Some of the slides that you're going to see coming up go over that again, but we just felt like this is a really new process for you all and saying it a couple of times might be a good thing. So the role of the Department of Ed. The CDE will continue to review petitions on appeal and make recommendations to the State Board of Ed. However, the recommendations will differ depending on the type of appeal being reviewed. So we will continue to review and provide a recommendation to grant or deny an appeal from a district decision where the county has jurisdiction over a single school district and SB authorized charter schools. And as Carrie mentioned just a moment ago, those follow the same de novo review process that you're used to. Then we will review and provide a recommendation on whether a district or county abused its discretion after denial by the district and county. And so those will look a little different because the information we're looking at is a little different. Those are not a de novo review, as Carrie mentioned. And we will be looking at the documentary record at the local level to make that determination and provide a recommendation. The role of the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools. So it does change a little bit. Prior to AB fifteen oh five, the role of the ACCS was not required by statute. The historical role has been to serve as an advisory body that holds public meetings to make recommendations to the SBE on non-classroom-based funding determination requests and whether it should, a recommendation on whether it should approve or deny a charter on appeal. AB fifteen oh five contemplates a statutory role for the ACCS. So it is in statute now. And I'll take a moment just to say that your attachment one is probably a little different than you're normally used to seeing in attachments, but we thought it was important to give the Board the most current ed code sections for ed code for seven six oh five and four seven six oh seven, which deals with the establishment and renewal of appeals. There's been obviously a lot of change with fifteen oh five. There's been some changes in recent trailer bills that were signed. And so what you have there is the most recent ed code language for these sections that we're talking about today. So we decided to sort of put into graph form, chart form, what you're used to seeing. And so this is another way of viewing what Carrie had just gone over in terms of what the ACCS process has been with de novo reviews. As we said, new and renewing petitions that were denied by a county board that has jurisdiction over a single school district, and there are seven of them in your attachment two, and renewing petitions for SB authorized charter schools. We've laid it out, and this will look familiar to you because this is what you have been doing for all appeals. And so that process won't change for those two types of appeals that I just mentioned. And, you know, as an aside, you know, we have been hearing conversations from the local level. You know, these renewals for this year are already going through the process. And so it's good to see that there are authorizers at the local level who are really contemplating how they look at these petitions on renewal, thinking about the new AB fifteen oh five requirements and being thoughtful about how, whether they renew or deny these charter appeals. So it's definitely having an impact on the local level. Again, in graph form, here is the process for abusive discretion review. Here you see a flowchart for the types of appeals that were instituted under fifteen oh five. These are appeals of new and renewing petitions for charter schools denied by a district and county board. These are the appeals which we will be reviewing whether there was an abuse of discretion at the local level. And again, or actually, I don't know if this was mentioned or not, but any appeals that the SBE decides there was an abuse of discretion, those charters will not be SB authorized as AB fifteen oh five got rid of that part of SBE authorization. SBE is no longer an authorizer. So in consultation with the charter, the SBE will be designating a charter authority, either the district or the county where that charter is located. So as mentioned several times, now the role of the State Board will look different under the new appeals requirements. This slide outlines the different review processes that the SBE will undertake for each of the different petitions that come in on appeal. I think the biggest change, obviously, will be that the SBE will now be reviewing the documentary record to determine if there is an abuse of discretion in some of these renewals. Under this type of appeal, the SBE is not reviewing the petition and the finances and the governance of the charter. They are looking solely at the documentary record. This is how the CDE and the ACCS will also be reviewing these appeals. So this will be a big change from the way this body is used to reviewing appeals. And as Carrie mentioned, we can also expect that we will have a combination of different types of appeals at one meeting. So it will be until we all are used to this process. It'll probably feel a little disjointed to have different types of appeals at one meeting, but we will, we will get you through this. And please remember that this is, you know, all-new. We haven't had any of these appeals yet. So we will be giving you, the staff at CDE will be giving you updated overviews as we move closer to hearing an abusive discretion appeal. I'm not sure when those will come in, but if I had to gather a guess, I'd probably say the earliest we'd see an abusive discretion appeal would probably be at the March, March meeting. And why is that? Well, here's the new timelines for the appeal process. And under, the new timelines extend the review periods under fifteen oh five. Extend the review periods at the local level from sixty days to ninety days. So when you think about a charter petition that is being renewed or established at the local level, the local district has ninety days to make their decision. And then it goes up to appeal, if it's denied, to the county. Mask is going crazy here. It goes up to the county, and then the county has ninety days to make their decision. So in total, that's almost six months, or about six months of time, before they actually can submit their appeal to the State Board of Ed. So what we're seeing this year is, obviously, the appeal process or the appeal, the review process at the local level has started much earlier than it normally would in the school year. So we have lots of renewals and establishments going through the process right now. But as it takes ninety days to get, really a hundred and eighty days to get through both levels at the local level, it will take some time to get up to us here at the state. So we won't expect to see any until probably, like I said, the March, March agenda. And I expect that May and July will, will have our hands full. So as Carrie mentioned before, there are thirty-six charters under the SBE's authorization. Six of those are up for renewal this year. And so we can expect, as they go through renewal, I think we've seen two so far at the local level. One that was approved, so we no longer have that charter. And one, I believe, that was denied, so that one probably will come up on appeal. And so as we said before, those that come up on appeal will be a de novo, de novo review. That'll be what you're used to, what you're used to seeing. We also have a statewide benefit charter, and that is High Tech High. And they are in the process of contemplating how they want to move forward as they are no longer allowed to be under State Board authorization. And as soon as we have any information on that, we will share it with you. And then we have the seven district-wide charters that will remain as they are. And we, the SBE delegates oversight duties of the remaining charter schools to the Department of Ed, with the exception of one at the current moment, which was Time Community School, which was approved at the July Board meeting. And if you remember, LA County has volunteered to take oversight of that school. So that's kind of where we are in terms of appeals, types of appeals that come to the State Board, the timelines, and the role that the Department, ACCS, and State Board will be establishing under this new fifteen oh five appeal process. So now we are going to talk a little bit about the new, the new non-classroom-based charter school requirements that have come about under fifteen oh five and fifteen oh seven. And for that, I'm going to bring up McKenna Huey.
Good morning, State Board members. My name is McKenna Huey, representing the Charter Schools Division, and I will talk to you today about non-classroom-based charter schools. So AB fifteen oh five added Education Code Section four seven six one two point seven, which prohibits the approval of a petition for the establishment of a new charter school that offers non-classroom-based instruction. This includes virtual schools and also charter schools that are funded as non-classroom-based charters. So this prohibition is from January one, twenty twenty, to January one, twenty twenty-two. And there are a couple of exceptions to this prohibition. It does not apply to non-classroom-based charter schools that were granted approval and started serving peoples prior to October one, twenty nineteen, under either of the following two circumstances. So either a charter school was required to submit a petition to the governing board of a school district or county board of education in an adjacent county in which its existing resource center is located in order to comply with Education Code Section four seven six oh five point one or to retain current program offerings or enrollment. And this also does not apply to charter schools that were required to submit a petition to a school district or county board of education in which a resource center is located in order to comply with the Anderson versus Shasta court decision or other relevant court ruling, and if the petition is necessary to retain current program offerings or enrollment. So this section of Education Code that AB fifteen oh five added cannot be waived by the State Board, and it shall remain in effect until January one, twenty twenty-three, and is repealed as of that date. So a charter school authorized by a different chartering authority in order to come into compliance with the geographic requirements put forth in Education Code Section four seven six one two point seven shall be regarded by the department as a continuing charter school for all purposes, to the extent that it does not conflict with federal law. And so the CDE refers to charter schools coming into compliance with this section as a restructured charter school. And a charter school is considered restructured if it either wholly changes its authorizer or if it divided into multiple charter schools by having its sites approved by a different chartering authority in order to comply with the geographic requirements. So in most cases, in pursuant to statute, restructured charter schools are required to be treated as continuing by the CDE for all purposes, including accountability and funding. To date, there is one known instance of a restructured charter school in fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty-one. And the CDE is prepared to treat this charter school as continuing and has been in communication with the school regarding the implications of this. So to implement the treat-as-continuing requirement, cleanup language was introduced in Senate Bills ninety-eight and eight twenty. Specifically, these bills added new sections of Education Code, as well as amended previous sections of Education Code to align with this new requirement. And you can see exactly which sections were added or amended on this slide here. So as I touched upon in yesterday's funding determination items, the CDE anticipates that the State Board will hear fewer funding determination requests as Section seventy-five of Senate Bill eight twenty significantly impacts the funding determination request process for renewing non-classroom-based charter schools for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty-one and twenty twenty-one to twenty-two. So specifically, this section extends the deadline for non-classroom-based charter schools to submit a funding determination renewal request from the date of February first to instead June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, depending on when a charter school's current funding determination period expires. So pursuant to this bill, non-classroom-based charter schools that submit a complete funding determination request by the June thirtieth deadline will receive their current level of funding for two years. Charter schools that submit a request after the deadline will receive eighty-five percent for two years. However, as currently permitted under regulations, both the charter school and the CDE may request that a school's funding level be reconsidered by the ACCS or the State Board.
Thank you, McKenna. So that was a lot of information. Everyone that spoke today and also members of our School Fiscal Services Division are here to answer questions. And before I hand it back off to you, President Darlingham, and I just want to say a quick thank you. Today will be the last day in our Charter Schools Division that we have Carrie Lopes with us. She has provided a lot of support to the ACCS and to the Board on charter school issues for the last few years. And we just want to say thank you to her. Thank you.
Thank you to her, and thank you to you for this very complex item and the very good explanation of it. We are going to go to public comment next. While people are queuing up for public comment, we'll take a five-minute break and then come back and take public comment, after which we'll hear from our board liaisons and enter into discussion. So it is now nine fifty-five. You may take five minutes. We'll see you back at ten o'clock. Get your coffee, and we'll see you shortly. And those who are interested in calling in for public comment, on the slide, you'll see the number and the access code to call into, and we'll take those comments as soon as we return. Turn off your video in your mutual computer. Do not leave the meeting, Board members. So we are now ready for public comment. Are there any public commenters?
Do you want to reestablish the quorum?
Oh, yeah. Let's reestablish the quorum. Please do.
Okay. Member Sun.
Here.
Vice President Strauss.
Here.
Member Rucker.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Member Patil Brownson.
Here.
Member Navo.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Glover Woods.
Here.
Member Pata.
Here.
President Darling-Hammond.
Here.
Member Burr.
Here.
Everyone's present.
All right. And we will now open up the line for public comment. Are there any public commenters?
Currently, we have 12 people in the, in the queue. And callers, a quick reminder, this is for item 13 only. If you would like to speak for another item, please hang up and call back at the appropriate time. Thank you for joining us. Joining us, please state your name and affiliation for the record. First caller, your time starts now.
Good morning, Honorable Board members and Superintendent Thurmond. My name is Helen Lopez, and I am the manager of data and analytics for Green Dot Public Schools. I am calling today to urge you to include CAPS data and core student growth percentiles on the verified data list. I spend hours pouring over data with our principals to support them in their efforts to accelerate student growth.
Caller, please excuse, please excuse me. You are speaking to the wrong item. Can I ask you to call back at the appropriate time? Thank you. Next caller, you are now unmuted. Please speak your name and affiliation for the record.
Good morning, President Darling-Hammond and members of the Board. I'm Ruth Sutton with Colvis Global Academy. I urge the Board to direct the CDE to stop using the terms "low," "mid," and "high performing" in the track sorting renewal guidance. The track sorting criteria already penalizes schools serving vulnerable populations and privileges schools serving students entering with higher academic baselines. Calling these tracks "high," "mid," and "low" means that the CDE is drawing conclusions from the data for authorizers, framing the data, and biasing data interpretation before the authorizer even has the chance to view the numbers to interpret what the data says about a school's quality. I urge the Board to insist tracks be identified with neutral terminology such as "track 1," "2," and "3" to avoid further biasing a renewal process that is already being made unnecessarily arduous and complex by the department's overreach pertaining to item 14 on today's agenda. Further, the burden of proof should be on the CDE to explain why it must use "high," "mid," "low" names on these tracks instead of neutral numbering. The CDE should explain why determining authorizers' conclusions
Thank you, caller.
is going to be best for kids on our state, in our state.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, are you on the line? Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, Board members. My name is Angela DeRamos. I'm a classroom teacher representing the California Teachers Association. CTA appreciates the CDE's work on AB 1505 and 1507 implementation. In our letter in item 13, CTA has pointed out some clarifications regarding this item. Finding for denials for the establishment of charter schools should be clarified to ensure that sound educational practice and the interest of the community are essential, and that no matter the track of the charter school, substantial fiscal, substantial governance, or creaming and cropping of students are all factors that could lead to the denial of an existing charter school. And that even though SBE 820 discusses funding requests for non-classroom-based charters, the SBE and CDE still have the authority to require updated information from a non-classroom-based charter, and that the SBE can still terminate a non-classroom-based charter. Lastly, CTA is prepared to support the SBE and CDE to ensure that the legislation intent is heated. Thank you so much.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, Honorable Board members and Superintendent Thurmond. My name is Julia Holland, and I'm the Public Programs Manager for Green Dot Public Schools. In my role, I lead Green Dot's compliance efforts with our authorizers and state agencies. I'm calling today to urge you to include CAPS data and core student growth percentiles on the state's verified data list. Seven of Green Dot's schools are currently going through a high stage.
Caller, I am so sorry. You are speaking to the wrong item. We'll need you to call back at the appropriate time.
Which item, which is, which item is right?
This is item number 13.
And which one should I call back for?
14, which will be the next item.
14. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Callers in the queue, just a quick reminder, we are only taking calls for item number 13. If you would like to speak to item 14, we need you to hang up at this time and call back. Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, President Darling-Hammond and Board members. This is Liz Guillen with Public Advocates, and today also for the ACLU. The charter school reforms that were just presented incorporate existing law that we advanced to clarify that charter schools are accessible for all students, that there not be enrollment policies or practices that limit enrollment for English learners, low-income students, students experiencing homelessness with exceptional needs, neglected or delinquent students, foster youth, or on the basis of their nationality, race, ethnicity, or sexual orientation. We appreciate being included in the stakeholder outreach by the department and board staff as they prepare to make new regulations to ensure there is clear guidance on how to implement this new process. We want to make clear that charter school authorizers have to closely review admissions policies and practices during the approval and renewal processes so that enrollment is not limited for high-needs student groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, are you on the line?
Hi, is, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, great. Hi, this is Amy Burfield. I'm the Executive Director of New Heights Charter School in Los Angeles. I'm calling just to share how the terms "high performing," "middle performing," and so on played out in our renewal track sorting. We're a school that serves 98% low-income students, with 30% of our kids who are EL students. And although our kids perform very well on the CAPS and do well on the dashboard for ELA and math, scoring actually 39 points better than the state average in EL and 52 points better than the math in EL, our LP score ended up being low on the one-year of measure that you all looked at when we were up for renewal this fall. And so then we were denied being on the high track just because of the LP score. And it's ironic because we had reclassified so many kids the year before that our remaining EL group were not our kids at the lower grades who had successfully reclassified, but they were our special needs students. 37% of them are duly identified as EL and special ed at our upper grades, and we just needed more time to reclassify with them. And if you looked at our data for long
Time.
you'll see they, it reduces over time. So please look at this more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, are you on the line?
Hi, Ramellian. Hi there, Ramellian. I'm calling on behalf of the California Charter Schools Association. First of all, we want to thank Stephanie Farland and her team at CDE, and the staff also in the State Board of Education for the outreach and opportunity to weigh in on the content of, the scoping content of regulations. We look forward to continuing to engage in the process. CDSA was deeply engaged with the administration and the content of AB 1505 and 1507. We believe that these laws will provide clear and balanced reforms to the charter school act. We urge the Board to take cautious, cautious approach to regulating these laws, and we generally support an approach to the State Board of Education regulation that will provide clarity on the processes as needed. The regulation process should not be used to interpret or reinterpret or reopen issues that were already delicately debated or resolved in the legislative process. We look forward to actively participating as the process continues, and thank you for your engagement on this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, you're live. Okay, that person hung up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, President Darling-Hammond and members of the Board. I'm Suzanne Kuye of the Charter Schools Development Center. Regarding the terms "low performing," "middle performing," and "high performing" to describe schools on the three renewal tracks, track sorting uses blunt tools. Analysis of state data shows that track placement correlates highly with income, but in many cases does not reflect student progress. Some schools on the low track are the highest-performing schools that their students have access to, whose resident schools score lower and would also be on the same track if non-charters were held accountable. We want to keep stronger schools open to students, even if they are charters. Some surprising data issues arise because track sorting compares to state K-12 averages for all schools without adjusting for grade level, and so on. We suggest using accurate language and referring to schools by track to prevent bias prior to deeper looks at data. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, are you on the line? Okay, thank you. This concludes public comment.
Thank you very much.
The conference has been locked.
Maybe we can take down the public comment slide now, and I'd like to turn to our liaisons to give us some framing. That would be Sue Burr and Ting Sun, and then we'll go into our board discussion.
Thank you, Linda. First, I'll just say I have a bunch of construction going on outside my window, so if you hear a lot of noise, I apologize. Let me know, and I'll try to do whatever I can about that. First, I just want to say, express my appreciation to the department and the board staff. As you can tell, this has been, and not only an exhaustive process, but an exhausting process, I think, to everybody who's been involved in trying to sort this through. There are a lot of conflicting or sort of things that are open to interpretation, I think, in the legislation. Some of it has been clarified in the trailer bills. Nevertheless, there will be a lot for the board to kind of wade through over the next couple of years, I think, relative to charters. I do, I have several questions about the presentation, I think, for clarification, but I, I will stop if it's okay with you, Linda, and let Ting say any opening comments that she might have, and then just ask if you could come back to me for questions.
Absolutely. Ting.
Yes. Thank you. I, I want to echo Member Burr's comments as well, and appreciation for the CDE staff working across divisions, departments. It is taking a team effort to, to implement this law, which is very complex. And, and I also appreciate the breakdown in the presentation to make it, the information digestible. AB 1505 makes dramatic changes to the charter law impacting over 1,300 charter schools and 640,000 public school students in California. So as we go through, and, and as Member Burr said, we're gonna, there's gonna be a lot more to work through, through the regulations and through how that new review process, renewal process is going to look like for us. So I just want to encourage us all to keep students in mind, and as we are looking at information, data, even as the public comments have, you've heard, there is more to some of that data that, as we're looking at, there isn't a lot of depth than what seemed, the surface numbers. So that's, that's really all. And I also will have a couple of questions as well, but I will save that for the question.
All right. Well, we're gonna go into the question part. So Sue, I'm gonna come back to you for some questions. I'm gonna open the floor to others. I'll be watching for participants to raise their hands.
Thank you, Linda. First is kind of a technical question, and maybe for Cindy. She talked, and it was helpful to hear the clarification about, there's a separate renewal process for schools that are categorized as DOT-DOT schools, or the alternative accountability schools. And I believe on one of her slides, she said that, that's, it sounds like a little bit of a mutually agreed-to process, but it's, she's talked about DAS schools where in the first year of their term, coming to agreement with their authorizer about what metrics to be used. We have many, many DAS schools that have been around for years, and I'm curious to know, what, what about those existing schools? Are they somehow grandfathered in, or how does that process work?
Hi, Sue. It's Cindy. It's a great question. The law does not talk about schools that have existed for a longer period of time. So like many things in this law, there are, there are pieces of it that are silent. So I do not have any additional information for you beyond that.
Okay. I didn't mean, I didn't mean for that to be a stumping question.
Not at all. Not at all. You started off with a good one. I, I should make you aware as well that there are several attorneys in the room, and Judy especially is, it looks like may be ready to be teed up if you want to direct the question to an attorney.
Well, I, I just think, you know, that, that's kind of a big, open question that probably does need to be resolved. And, and maybe by accident, I brought up an, an example of where this law is, still needs lots of clarification, and, and there'll be lots to work through. So the second question, and maybe this is for Carrie, or it might be for Stephanie, whichever, I just wanted to understand for sure how fiscal impact is determined, because when you talked about the community impact, you mentioned fiscal impact, and then there was sort of this separate, almost and-if, or and-or fiscal impact that had very specific definition. And I, I'm just trying to figure out if authorizers get two bites of the apple on fiscal impact, or they explicitly have to be in those categories that were outlined on the slide.
So Sue, this is Stephanie. There are two new, two new references to fiscal impact. In 1505, as you mentioned, there is a fiscal impact reference under the community impact piece, and then there's the fiscal impact criteria that stands alone. And the one that stands alone has very definitive criteria in terms of moving a district into a, you know, from, and I'm probably the, not the best person to remember how this all goes, but from qual, from positive to qualified or negative. So, and there's a process that the county and FICMAT will use to determine that, and that seems to be pretty, pretty cut and dry. The fiscal impact under the community impact piece is something that we are working through right now. When we had our stakeholder meetings last week with authorizer groups, union groups, and charter school operators, and charter school advocacy groups, we discussed that at length. And so we got a lot of feedback from those folks. And so we're, we're still sort of working towards how, how an authorizer might determine fiscal impact in the community piece. You know, I know that we're careful, as, as one of the callers stated earlier, you know, not to interpret or, or add more into regulations than the law intended. So we are sort of balancing that piece with also making sure that there is some room for authorizers at all levels to determine, determine that. So I don't have a specific answer for you about how that fiscal impact piece will be determined at the local level, but you're right, there are two separate, as you said, bites of the apple when it comes to fiscal impact.
Okay. I was afraid of that. Just say, as a preview to what we're gonna talk about at the next item around verified data, that I, as I understood, a lot of the intent around the clarification for charter law was to have some standard, objective standards for decision-making, so we don't get into this back and forth about just, you know, some districts operating a certain way, others operating a different way, we're doing something different. It does seem to me that since there is a very clear definition, and as you said, Stephanie, it's a very cut and dried, that we followed it for years with school districts about what their fiscal categorization is, if you will, positive, negative, qualified, that we should be following that. It, it just seems inherently unfair to give districts two bites of the apple on that one, but I will leave it at that. The second one, I just, and this I think is for you, Stephanie, I'm a little bit confused about the term "the State Board will no longer be an authorizer" versus "the State Board no longer providing oversight," because you talked about Because you talked about, there's a specific process for charters that are currently SBE authorized. And what we will go through for that, I assume they still have to go back to the local level. So I need to clarify that. Okay, so they go back to the local level, they try to get renewed by their district or by their county. If they're still not able to, they can come back to us again, right? For another, for a final review. We do a de novo, and we do a de novo review. And then we either say yes or no, which presumably makes us still an authorizer. But then we don't, meaning the department, doesn't provide oversight. So I'm just trying to clarify what the board role is with those charters that are currently authorized by the state.
So let me clarify one little piece and then I'm going to turn it over to Judy, who has another piece to clarify. So SBE current, SBE authorized charter schools do go back to the district that they reside in to get authorization first. They don't have to go to the county. So if the district denies them, they come straight back to the state board for an appeal.
Yeah, so Sue, this is Judy. The state board is no longer considered a chartering authority under the law. So what happens is if the state board approves the charter school, an SBE authorized charter school because the district has denied, like Stephanie explained, then we have to delegate oversight to either, or delegate chartering authorization, I guess is the word, to either the LEA or the county office. And they will be responsible for hearing material revisions, everything regarding the charter school. Even if the state, under current law or previous law, we had the option of delegating oversight, but we still would have heard the material revisions and those kind of things. So this is getting the state, I think the intent was to get the state out of the oversight and authorization business. And then at their next renewal, then they would go to the district, go to the county, and come up to the state board under an abuse of discretion standard. So they get one chance to come back to us under de novo and the de novo review. And then five years later, they will be just treated like all the other charter schools.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And just my last one is sort of a technical one. And we have heard this in the public comment, and I know we saw this in the letter. This concern about using the terms low performing, middle performing, high performing. I believe that's in statute, but I would like that clarified. And just as an editorial comment, I thought we got out of labeling schools when we got done with NCLB. So I share the concern about, you know, branding these schools, if you will. I get that you want to categorize them for purposes of additional review. That seems reasonable to me. But I just would express my support for not labeling schools.
Thank you, Sue. This is Cindy again. The terms low and high does appear in the law. We went, we went back and forth on this actual phrase. We talked to not only the California Teachers Association, but the Charter School, CCSA. We talked to districts as well. And this was actually a sort of a negotiated category just to make it really operational in the field. So while we, I think, share your concern for the labeling, because we know what NCLB has done or did and continues to due to schools. We just needed to make sure that this was very clear. But the low and high does appear in law as well as performance levels. Whether or not they appear and are very clear that these are the full name, like high performance levels, I'm not sure that you would actually see that full phrase in there. But, you know, in the section, you see references to each of those labels throughout, with the exception of the middle piece.
Okay, well, I would support trying to change that in statute. That's it for me, Linda. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. I'm going to go to Ting next, and then Eileen has her hand up. And if others want to be recognized, just put your hands in the air, so to speak. Ting?
I appreciate board member Sue going before me because she asked a lot of the questions that I had as well. Specifically to the high, medium, and low designations. I did go through and read, and I didn't see those specific terms. I'm sure it must be in law somewhere. But I would also encourage that we go back and take a look at that. We were very deliberate not post-NCLB, not labeling schools with those types of categories. So it seems to be consistent that we would be doing this with a subset of schools on the charter schools. So I would also encourage taking a look at that. I mean, just tier one, two, and three seems to make sense. And then also, I also want to just support the, as we are working on the implementation, some, looking at some objective standards by which we can provide guidance through the field so that we have some consistency with the authorizers, looking at processes and information. And then looking at-
Ting, your voice is kind of breaking up a little. Maybe stay close to the mic.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
A little bit, yes.
Okay. So in addition to, so what was I saying? The objective standards and looking at some objective criteria. When we look down the road at the determining abuse of discretion, I think it would help us be in a better position to be able to determine that.
Anything else?
That's it, thanks.
Okay, great. Eileen?
So Sue and Ting, I just first thank you for the clarification and for all the analysis that staff's been working on this. I did have some questions on finance. I'm still not quite clear on it, but I'm assuming as we get closer to hearing these, we'll get some more guidance on that from our staff and council. I had a question on the presentation about if a charter did not serve local interests or duplicate services. That, could you clarify, Stephanie or part of your team, on what that meant? Or are we interpreting that in the law, what that means?
Hi, Eileen, this is Judy. That was within the definition of community impact, which we've been talking about a little bit. Because it talks about how the chartering authority shall consider factors regarding measurable increases in achievement, the impact on the community as a whole, that includes fiscal impact, whether duplication of existing services or programs, that's all caught up in the larger definition of community impact. Or discussion around community impact definition is probably too strong of a word. But there's many factors to be considered within the community impact finding that Stephanie was talking about earlier.
So does that mean that it could include, I mean, I'm sure we'll find out as we hear some of these, would, if there was a program already offered in a public K-12 school that the charter was offering that could take away from that? Is that considered, is that the type of thing that this means?
That is exactly the discussion we had last week at the regulation stakeholder meeting. How do you define community? Is community the district? Or is it something smaller, the neighborhood? You can imagine in LAUSD, community would look very different than community might in Northern California. So that's what we're sort of balancing, whether we need regulations to further define it. And if so, how can we do it so that it covers the whole state? And one other thing, you know, they're looking at existing programs within neighborhoods. Is it, again, the district? Is it similar programs across the whole district? So it's pretty complicated.
Yeah, and there's other parts to it, Eileen, that makes it even more complicated in terms of when these charters, if, for instance, a charter petition is denied and the findings are under community impact, how the county and the state board, if it comes up to us, can actually determine that, since we don't live in that community? So that's another piece of it that will be challenging for us if they come up here on appeal.
And the other thing too, Eileen, I think Stephanie and I said this in her presentation, that this community impact and the new fiscal impact finding, there's the community impact that includes fiscal impact and the separate fiscal impact finding that's the FICMAT qualify negative. Those can only be used when you're denying establishment of new charter school. They're not something that happens at renewal.
Right. Or a material revision. Yeah.
All right. Any, anything else on that? I'm going to go to Matt then. I noticed that SBE slash LT has a hand up. I don't know if there's somebody on the state board.
Each member, right?
That's me. That's Patricia Recker.
Okay, so after Matt will come to you, Patricia.
I just want to thank, number one, I think this is incredibly complicated. And I just want to thank Stephanie, all the team for laying it out so clearly. It really helped put a lot of missing pieces together for me. I want to echo board member Burr and Sun, especially in relationship to the funding issue. And I think that's going to complicate things for districts. And the more we can standardize and give them guidance, I think it's going to help. I also would agree that when I looked at the ed code, it appears that that language does show up. As Cindy had pointed out, that low track is defined. But if there is flexibility, I agree. I struggle with labeling schools as a result of what we lived through NCLB. My question is simple. I think it was in relationship to how this gets teed up to the board. And when I looked at slides 31 for the de novo review, it's been my short experience that we rely heavily on the ACCS to give us a sense as to what their feeling is in relationship to the authorization or denying the petitions for charters. And I couldn't understand why in slide 33, there are different options. And the one that threw me off was make no recommendation to the state board. That throws me off because I think Stephanie, in the past, the CDE has given the ACCS a recommendation. And then ACCS grapples with that and either affirms or denies. And so I'm confused as to how that would even come to us, because it basically leads me to believe there's no decision.
Hi, Matt, this is Judy. That was, in case there's a tie vote, for example. There have been situations at the ACCS where there may not be a quorum or there is a tie vote. So maybe it's a four-four vote. So they don't have an official recommendation because they don't have the votes. But the charter school, the appeal needs to continue to move forward so there's not a delay in the state board hearing it. So in the past, what we have done, when there isn't an official quote unquote recommendation from the ACCS, what CDE does is they list that in the item. They say the vote was, you know, five, you know, two, three, or whatever it was. However, you know, there was not an official recommendation. So that's all it is, in case that they're unable to reach a decision because of a tie.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Judy. And I assumed they could have the tie in the de novo, but it didn't give them that choice either. Right? It just wasn't clear to me. Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Patricia?
Well, thank you very much. First of all, I also want to add my appreciation for the staff on the work that you have done as a department, as a unit, as a team, to put this very complicated presentation together. This is a conversation that, while it's not long overdue, it's a conversation, a debate, a controversy that the people sitting on this panel have been living with and dealing with and working through for quite some time. And for a lot of times, each time that there is an appeal, we revisit with a great deal of frustration what it means to do this work, what it means to be fair and listening to and reviewing these appeals or listening to and making the consideration of creating a charter school. And as it was pointed out at the beginning of this presentation, the goal is to say, what is? Look at the plain letter of, plain writing and the plain statements in the statute and attempt to tell the board what is, without going too far to one side or the other in trying to interpret what's in the statute. And so I could still hear some of the same frustrations we're having and some new ones that have arisen, particularly about the fiscal pieces. And so part of what I did, and especially when I listened to the people who called in for the public comment, and I forgot to say thank you very much for the people who made their statements on public comment. I did look at the statute and I did look at the legislative analysis that was done concerning the labeling of schools. It might be instructive to take a look at what the thinking was in the committees and in the, with the legislators who did the work of offering amendments to try to resolve the conflicts concerned, and the issues concerning labeling schools. Because there was a lot of effort to try to figure out the most neutral way to identify and compare and give a transparent way of evaluating what the status and performance of those schools were, since academic performance is the primary, is still the primary way of evaluating these schools when it comes to renewal. So I think it's worthwhile to take a look at that analysis. A lot of stakeholders, including the ones that Stephanie has referenced, were deeply engaged in that conversation and settled on and agreed on that particular language. I think it's also important to take a look at the issue concerning the fiscal analysis. Again, that took a lot of time. There was a lot of deliberation, a lot of discussion, and a lot of, finally, what came to be consensus, not only among the stakeholders, but among the legislators who were the principals involved in crafting this policy. You know, nothing is perfect. There's no such thing as perfect. And I would like to see, as we begin to do the work to implement this, that we don't sacrifice the good because we're unhappy that we didn't solve the perfect. I think this is a good start, that it has resolved some longstanding concerns that have been arguments among the people on this day that have raised questions about what it means to do a de novo review, what it means to look at the board's role and relationship with local school districts in doing these appeals. So I think my mental model about what is supposed to happen, particularly with the fiscal review and whether or not that's two unfair bites at the apple, I don't happen to agree. So let's find out whether it's fair or not when we actually begin implementing and using these new processes to understand, rather than to interpret, whether or not we agree with or disagree with, or try to identify and create our own interpretation on it. I think we have an opportunity to do some good work with policy on monitoring and creating a charter school community and a relationship among districts and charters that can be different than what we've experienced with the contentiousness and the automaticity of how people pick sides or define what it needs to be done to evaluate not only good charter programs, but also how to deal with the conversation as charters come to the board to approve. So I think this is a good start. I think it's important for us to make sure we understand what the statute says. But I think it's a mistake to prognosticate on what the legislature got right or wrong, or what we like or do not like. And we have not actually gone through the work of doing the regulations, of doing the implementation, and we're only hearing about it for the first time. So that's my comment for today.
Thank you. Cynthia, you are next. And then I don't see another hands. I'm going to add a comment after yours and try to move us along, because this is the information I- so we don't have to make big decisions today, but I do want everybody to get the understanding they need for the future. Cynthia?
Thank you. First, just to echo the appreciation of staff for everything that was done. Also to underscore a concern about the labeling with the high, low. My understanding is we are not labeling any non-charter LEAs in that way. So again, wondering if there might be a different terminology that can be used. My question is specific to the abuse of discretion review standard. On slide 26, there is some detail on the type of information that's to be considered. And I just wanted to know if staff could provide a little bit more clarification or examples as to what that might look like, what type of information would be looked at more specifically than what is identified on the slide.
Thank you, Cynthia. So yes, so abusive discretion is a term that we have not yet defined. There are definitions for it, obviously, legal definitions for it. But we have not yet determined whether or not that definition, that term, needs to be defined in regs or if it's something that can be defined-
that definition, that term needs to be defined in regs or if it's something that can be defined using legal terminology. So we're not there yet in terms of actually defining abusive discretion. But it is clear that when a charter appeal comes up to us, the Board must look at the documentary record, which will include the findings from the local Boards, County and District. May include some sort of transcript or video or audio of the actual meeting. You know, there are pieces of the documentary record that this Board will will be reviewing to determine whether or not there was an abusive discretion. I'm sorry, I can't give you a clear definition today, but we will soon. But so in that sense, you're looking at the documentary record versus what happens under a de novo review where you're actually looking at the petition and looking at the, you know, fiscal and all of the pieces that you used to look at. In this case, you'll just be looking at the documentary record. And there'll be a lot of, there'll be a lot under the documentary record for you to review. But we don't have quite the definition yet. Is that a good? Judy has anything to add? This is Judy. Yes, Stephanie's right. It is different because this is more a review of the documents that are submitted to the State Board by the charter who's filing the appeal. And it includes the petition, includes all, like Stephanie said, all of the action and documents that were reviewed by the district and the county. The district and the county have an opportunity to file a written document that explains why they think there was not an abusive discretion. It really is analogous, and I know we haven't done one of these for a while, but to how the Board, the State Board has been reviewing revocation appeals in the past. So in the revocation appeals, there's more a look at the findings by the district and the county as opposed to an independent review of the petition, like Stephanie said, where you're looking at the program and making a determination whether the program is serving all students. And it's more a review of actually what was happening at the district and the county level.
So I answered your question adequately?
Yes, that does help. Thank you.
And I see that Ida's hand has gone up, so we'll turn to you.
Thank you.
Make the last comment and then move it on to the next item.
All right. I just want to thank staff for breaking this down because it is very complex. And for the questions and the, you know, the talk about labeling, labeling schools. And I especially want to thank Board Member Rucker for her comments regarding the intent of the legislation and going back and looking at that. So this has been incredibly eye-opening and I appreciate all of the conversation today.
Great. And I'm going to ask one more question before we move on. First, I do want to acknowledge the challenge of figuring out how to identify the categories given the way that the law reads. I do want to also associate myself with the comments about trying to avoid that kind of labeling, given the other variables that are always in the mix. And, you know, part of what we did see during the NCLB era, and we're still trying to find ways to acknowledge school progress and student progress, is that schools that serve high-need students are often then the recipients of low-performing labels, even when they may have produced a lot of growth for their students. We will have a growth model at some point, and that will be very helpful in part of, you know, in part of ameliorating that. But if we can think of another way to identify schools, I think it would be useful. And my last question goes to that point. One of the challenges that occurred in that era and that we're still working with is that to, you know, get higher levels of performance, whether a school is a charter or a non-charter school, one way to accomplish that is to teach other students who perform poorly. And we had a long conversation about our alternative schools, you know, yesterday. And that phenomenon is one that continues to be an equity concern. One of the pieces of the law did talk to the point that someone brought up in the public comment about creaming and cropping, that there's a procedure to ensure that schools are admitting and keeping in students with high levels of needs in the same way that is expected of public schools. I would like just like a very brief comment about how that piece of the law will be tracked a little bit more on that.
Darlene Hammond, this is Cindy Kazanas again. So there is a requirement that we produce an enrollment data file. And while we didn't go into it in grave detail, we I'm sure we can in another meeting. We have available on our public website the cumulative enrollment files which are required, and then there's two other pieces of this section which looks at enrollment trends, also with looking at CASP results. So that information is available for authorizers to request as specified in the Education Code for fifteen oh five. So the data files have been requested by several authorizers to use this year. We have run the data for the entire state. So if they wanted to, you know, ask for things in anticipation of a future renewal, that data is available, again, upon request. The one piece of data we're able to put out there publicly is the cumulative enrollment file.
We, yeah, we could come back to that in another occasion. I know it will be complex. My understanding of the law is that a school could not be automatically renewed without that analysis having. But let's put that on a docket for a later conversation, and we can learn more about it. With that, this is an information item. It's a lot of information. I really appreciate the work that the department staff has done and the State Board staff to get us kind of up to speed on this very complex piece of legislation, which really does frame our responsibilities. And so we're going to move on to the next item. We will probably need a break at some part of that item because they also be an intense one, but we're going to keep on moving. And thank you very much, Steph, and others who have given us all this good information. Board members, we're going to move on to Item fourteen, which is related to this discussion. It is approval of the criteria to define verified data and the list of valid and reliable assessments and measures of post-secondary outcomes as required by California Education Code, Section four seven six oh seven dot two. And this item will be presented by Cindy Kazanas. This is a big morning for you, Cindy. And I could let you sit down very much. And I'll let her share with you the CDE recommendation. And you launch your presentation. Thank you.
The conference has been unlocked.
Accountability Reporting Division, sorry, didn't turn on my microphone. Cindy Kazanas, Director of the Analysis, Measurement and Accountability Reporting Division. In following the footsteps of Item thirteen, Item fourteen is before you today for action. You are required by January first, two thousand twenty-one, to adopt a list of verified data, and we're going to go into this in great detail today. Before I get started on the presentation, I just wanted to provide some framing remarks. Like other pieces of fifteen oh five, we have been meeting since July of two thousand nineteen to describe, or rather, to process how do we implement this law in the department. This section of the law, the department recognized early on, would be outside of the scope of the expertise of staff in the department. And so we submitted very quickly a budget change proposal to ask for outside help to move forward on this piece. And we were successful in getting some funding to contract with WestEd under the leadership of Deb Sigmund and Eric Crane to do this work on our behalf. And so you will see a report in the item from WestEd. They have been a terrific partner, thought partner, but also checking for understanding and providing us the technical expertise we needed. Because this was a very short turnaround and also, you know, there's such an emphasis on the technical aspects of it. I also wanted to talk about how we approach this. We approach this like we do anything else in accountability. We look at it from the lens of making sure that what we're providing you is technically sound and valid. We've reached out to stakeholders on, we actually, as part of the WestEd contract, we asked them to develop a stakeholder group and meet with them. That was not required under the law, but we felt it was really important that we did that. We met with stakeholders on a couple of occasions, and then after the item was posted, we met with them again. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that this piece of the law, as well as the other two pieces that my division has been a part of, has been what you see as the result of this is hundreds of hours of work. I think yesterday somebody said that we've had the luxury of time because of COVID and we didn't have to produce a dashboard this year. Well, we had to produce fifteen oh five. And we were fortunate that we had a couple of extra resources as a result of not producing a dashboard to direct at this. But we did put some work on hold. And so this piece of legislation has been really a all-hands-on-deck. It's been a tremendous effort on the technical side. And so the result of what you see today was a cooperative effort throughout my entire division with support from our terrific staff in the Legal Division, in the Charter School Division, in the State Board. This was an effort that we could not have done alone. We, just like the other pieces, we went back and we checked for understanding on several occasions because this law does have different definitions throughout the law, and it's conflicts sometimes. And so we needed to make sure that we could actually operationalize again, what you see today, not only in Item thirteen and Item fourteen. We also met on several occasions with legislative staff, and I think that's important because we weren't in the room when this law was negotiated. We're simply left with what you see on paper to actually implement. And so what you see is, again, our best effort to make this something that can be operationalized and bring before you, based on sound technical arguments. So the report that I mentioned for WestEd is included in Attachment one with recommendations in that attachment. After the agenda was posted, we met with our stakeholder group, and there was a lot of concern around a couple of pieces. One being the lack of having CASP specified on the list of verified data. And so a couple of days ago, actually the day after election, the State Board staff posted an addendum. And so while you will not hear about the addendum in the WestEd piece of the presentation, I will go through each of the items that we've adjusted based on stakeholder feedback, based on the letters you received to make this, I think, more palatable for everyone. So we listened in this item to stakeholder feedback. We were open to constructive criticism. We've made adjustments accordingly. So the recommendation is that the State Board approve the recommendations contained in Attachment one of the addendum. You see the full recommendations in the addendum, which includes first, the criteria to define verified data. Second, the data use procedures related to verified data. Third, the academic progress indicators for inclusion within the approved verified data list. And finally, the post-secondary indicators for inclusion within the approved verified data list. One of the revised recommendations that we're going to, we would like to add, and we're recommending that be added, is the effective date. So our recommendation is the list is effective January first, two thousand twenty-one, but not required to be used by a chartering authority for charter school petitions received prior to January first, two thousand twenty-one. However, by agreement of the parties, the verified data adopted by the State Board of Education can be used prior to January first, two thousand twenty-one. So I mentioned in my remarks for Item thirteen, I'm going to repeat some of those today so that you hear the full piece of this, that we began work in earnest on pieces of fifteen oh five because we had to, of course, have the dashboard data put out for the current year. So December twenty nineteen, following the release of the dashboard data based on the results of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year, we fast-forward one month after the holidays to January, and the work began in earnest on this. So as I mentioned in Item thirteen, I'll go over this a little quicker this time. Dashboard Alternative School Status, schools have their own renewal criteria per this Education Code section. And charter school authorizers shall consider performance on state and local indicators in the dashboard as part of that renewal process. Additionally, as we mentioned in Item thirteen, charter school authorizers must meet with the charter school during the first year of the charter school's term to mutually agree to discuss alternative metrics to be considered and shall notify the charter school of the alternative metrics to be used within thirty days of the meeting. Again, this is only relevant to charter schools. For traditional schools or non-charter schools, AB fifteen oh five established new renewal criteria that is applied to them statewide, as you've heard in the previous item. It holds all charter schools to the same criteria and standards. And it also has the criteria places for charter schools in one of the three performance levels. And I appreciate the rich discussion from the last item. This list has been public since July first, and we have not heard those comments up until now. And so I think it was enlightening for us to hear that, again, the labeling that had been mutually agreed on by several of the groups still wasn't quite a good fit. So we'll take that back and try to figure out if we can do something different moving forward. Additionally, the renewal process that the charter schools and authorizers are required to follow is dependent on their performance level that we've talked about. So I won't go into as much detail, again, as we reviewed this in the previous item. But the first thing we do is look at what we call Criterion One, whether or not they're in the high or low based on colors on the dashboard. So whether or not they hit that blue and green on all indicators, of which, again, we saw about twenty-seven schools do that this past year. And then the red and orange on all dashboard indicators, which we saw no schools reach. Majority of them are in the combination, which they move to Step Two, which is the second page of this flow chart, and which we then look at status and student groups. And so the high performing on the far left-hand side, the presumptive renewal brings it up to seventy-two schools. And then you have the low performing in this middle area. And we are now in the verified data piece. So we're going to spend the remainder of this conversation on what does verified data look like for low performing and middle performing. So just to be clear about performance levels and the use of verified data, here's the actual specificity in the law for you to look if you're interested. And again, this was a rich discussion in Item thirteen, so it sounds like it's worth going back and looking at those. High-performance schools are not subjected to verified data. Middle-performing schools are, as well as low-performing schools. So those are the schools that we're going to be looking at today. And here's the code section that tells you what's before you and why we are bringing this to you for action today. By January first of two thousand twenty-one, the State Board shall establish criteria to define verified data and identify an approved list of valid and reliable assessments. Further, the Education Code section states that verified data means data derived from nationally recognized, valid, peer-reviewed, and reliable sources that are externally produced. And verified data shall include measures of post-secondary outcomes. You're going to see throughout this presentation that we've tried to quote the law where we can to make sure that we're all using the same words and the same terminology. So first, a low-performing school, the authorizer must consider verified data. The Education Code section states the chartering authority shall consider clear and convincing evidence showing either the following. One, a school achieved measurable increases in academic achievement as defined by at least one year's progress for each year in school. And two, strong post-secondary outcomes as defined by college enrollment, persistence, and completion rates equal to similar peers. For middle performing, the authorizer must also consider verified data, as we saw on the flow chart. And here's the Education Code section that's relevant to the middle performing. In addition to the state and local indicators, a chartering authority shall consider clear and convincing evidence showing either of the following. The school achieved measurable increases in academic achievement as defined by at least one year's progress for each year in school. And B, strong post-secondary outcomes as defined by college enrollment, persistence, and completion rates equal to similar peers. You can see there are minor differences between the two. They're not directly, they don't have the exact same language. So with that, there is limits on the data available for use, which is why I think it was really important that we consider adding that we consider adding CASP, which we're present, again, presenting in our addendum. So increased academic achievement, AB 1505 defines the increase of academic achievement as having at least one year's progress for each year in school. And post-secondary outcomes, AB 1505 defines them as college enrollment, persistence and completion rates equal to similar peers. The law does not define similar peers. The law also does not reference career technical education as a post-secondary outcome. So with that framing in mind, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Eric Crane from WestEd to introduce the remainder of, of this section of the slides and I will move your slides for you, Eric.
Great, thank you Cindy. President Darling-Hammon, Chief Deputy Superintendent Gregson and distinguished members of the board. I'm Eric Crane, Senior Researcher at WestEd and Director of WestEd's Charter Verified Data Technical Support Project. Before I begin, I need to thank my colleagues who worked on this. I have the, the honor of presenting today, but it really is as much their work as anyone's. So a, a big thanks to Ryan Lewis, Sylvia Kwan, Tran Keys, Kathy Hunsaker, Mark Greenfield and Deb Sigmund. So in this project, what did we do? Next slide. The project had four key components. A big part of it was analysis. We looked at possible indicators that met the statutory definition and could serve as verified data. We convened, we brought stakeholders together to get feedback about verified data. We wrote up what we found. And as today is an example, we're presenting findings. So those are the four key parts of the project. Next slide. Wanted to give an overview of the, of the timeline. As Director Kazanis described, the work goes back quite a bit before the middle of 2020, but in terms of the specifics of when WestEd became involved and could begin on the work. The, our work began in July, on July 1st, when the ed code sections went into effect. Early on, the department in partnership with state board staff identified stakeholders to take part in the verified data work. At the end of July, we reached out to test publishers and asked them for technical evidence that would be reviewed for our academic progress indicators review. It doesn't show here, but I'll, I'll just include that in early August, we did some surveying. We surveyed stakeholders to make sure we understood their issues, concerns, what was on their mind. And also in early August, we did a statewide data landscape survey that was pushed out by Director Stephanie Farland and her team to all the charter schools in the state. And we basically inquired about what assessments they were using for progress monitoring. So I'll talk about that a little later, but I wanted to talk about that, mention it now in the timeline. We did an update report at the end of August and then in September, the beginning and the end of September, we had our two stakeholder meetings. And September was very busy for us as well, doing that analysis work, looking at the technical evidence that had been submitted by the test publishers. In October, we put together our report and here we are today with the state board meeting. And of course you see if there's any cleanup or technical revisions, we'll do that to, to close out the process. But January 1st is sort of the, the day we're, we're all heading to. That's the, the date in statute. Where the, the board needs to have established criteria for verified data. So that's the timeline. Next slide. I won't read through all these names. I think a number of these names are going to be familiar to the members of the board and the public who's been engaged with this issue. If, if the names of the individuals themselves are not familiar, certainly the organizations they represent will be familiar to you. These thoughtful professionals, they've been in the arena. They've been engaged in charter issues for a long time. And in our stakeholder meetings, they brought their expertise and their passion to the discussions. I will say that folks did not always agree. There are competing points of view on a number of issues, but I do want to call out that, you know, at, at a time when passion over, often overflows and, you know, bleeds into something less than respectful discussion. This group maintained a, a real high level of engagement and a real respectful level of engagement. And so I think they deserve a lot of the credit for pushing the process forward. Next slide. So as we went about our work, we kept, we kept these things in mind. Charter schools and authorizers should not have to be psychometricians to be able to do this, to do this work. They, you know, a high level of assessment expertise should not be needed to do this work. However, the school should be able to at least describe test administration procedures and other non-technical factors that relate to school performance. And lastly, this was not an exercise in finding a best assessment or a best post-secondary outcome measure. We really centered our work on a, on a fundamental question, and that is could the assessment reasonably be used to inform the question of did the school make one year's progress? And in the case of post-secondary, could, could this be, be used to establish strong post-secondary outcomes? And relative to similar peers. So this was not about, you know, a ranking exercise. And, you know, I should say that this was, you know, we looked at it for this purpose. So when we considered issues of validity, we were, we were looking at validity for this question at hand. Next slide. So the central task of the board is to establish the criteria for verified data. And so in talking about the criteria, I think it'd be interesting and helpful to the board to share that, you know, initially our perspective was what was in statute, that these potential indicators had to have validity, reliability, be evidence-based and be aligned to standards. So we, we brought it kind of a very technical focus to the task. And the stake, the stakeholders really pushed back and articulated a different view and, you know, and, and kind of expanded how we were thinking about criteria. And they, they said that, no, the criteria need to be more than that. They need to talk about the data sources, but also get into how the data would be used, or else there'd be, you know, confusion or inefficiency, maybe misapplication. So that the work of defining criteria would need to speak to the data themselves, but also to get into issues of data use. And I'll say some more about that on the next slide. To underscore the point, a technical focus alone would not be sufficient to be useful to the field, would not be sufficient to clarify how verified data would be applied. Making the discussion of data use explicit would be essential. And some of the concerns they had would, included misapplying verified data or the vagueness or multiple interpretations about, about data and how it could be presented. And I think this is going to be familiar to, to members of the board, where you have to, you know, set broad guidelines while still allowing for, you know, lo, local control and local application. So I think we wrestled with some of these issues about what, you know, where those lines would be. And then ultimately this, you know, this type of issue comes to, comes to you all. So the, as much as we tried to, you know, game through and think through every possible use case. And I think the stakeholders were very helpful with that, with many of the examples they brought up. You know, in a state as diverse as California, there are going to be some examples that we missed or could not anticipate. But, you know, I think, you know, everyone brought an intentionality to the work to be as precise as we could be given the diversity of California. Next slide. So with that, and I will, I will say that these are elaborated, you know, in the full item, but with that, we recommend the following criteria to define verified data. Data eligibility, participation, disaggregation, student groups and methodology. And, you know, for this, like I said, the, 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 the full criteria are explained in the, in the board item. And, you know, I think the, the recommendations here do reflect a lot of the input from the stakeholders. And as you can see, it's much more than just the initial technical focus that we have. It's actually some clarification and elaboration about those points. Next slide. When it comes to the data use and the, the added specificity around the application of the data, we recommend the, the following procedures. Flexibility, that is to say that there's not a particular data source that's compelled to be used. Multiple measures in that, you know, the charter school and authority can be discussing more than, more than one aspect of verified data. Transparency, that the charter school and authority should have access so they can see what data the other side is, you know, talking about and talking through. Security that, you know, particularly for the assessment results that the, or the assessment administration, that there be, the assessment be administered in keeping with the administration and security provisions of the test publisher. Longitudinal progress, that results be of the same group over time. Differences from CASP, that the discussion include some understanding of, of where why the results might look different from CASP results. And comparability. So, and then again, particularly for post-secondary outcomes, where you're looking relative to similar peers, that you can be able to compare results across, across schools. And again, each of these is also explained in the, in the full board item. I'll point out here that the department's addendum goes into a couple of additional data use procedures as well, one relating to CASP and another related to pandemic and natural disaster considerations. And I think the department's going to speak through those. Next slide. So I want to explain a little bit about what we did process-wise and how we got to our technical review on the assessments. For the, the academic progress indicators or the assessments, we reached out to publishers whose assessments are widely in use in California charter schools. We had a few different ways of knowing this. You know, we, we do work in this area and so we had considerable internal expertise about what was being used as progress monitoring or periodic assessments in the schools. We did speak with the California Charter Schools Association and the Charter Schools Development Center and inquired about what were the main assessments in use in California. And both of those sources were supported with this data landscape survey that I referenced earlier. So again, in early August, again, with the help of Director Farland, we pushed out the survey and asked what assessments are you using? And some 74 different assessments came up through that, that process. We did not contact fully 74. They, they needed to either arise out of our discussions or in the survey to have at least a, a minimum threshold of, of use in the state before we reached out to them. But some 74 different assessments came up. Next slide. Yeah, this infographic goes into a little more depth about the, the process. In the leftmost box, what we're calling round one in this slide. We identified and contacted 12 publishers and you can see the list there. These, these came up consistently. But in the data landscape survey, we saw that we hadn't, we hadn't really reached all of those that were in wide enough use. These additional ones met our threshold for additional contact. That, that brings the running count to 16. And then round three, this one, I say with some amusement is that a 17th publisher caught wind of this process and proactively reached out to CDE and, and asked, you know, what's this all about? Can we get in on this? And so they proactively, you know, asked to be involved. Ultimately, not all of these 17 assessment publishers submitted technical information for our review. About 13 of them did. And I'll, I'll say a little bit more in a moment. Next slide. This simple flow chart shows our process. We did a very quick scan called here and referred to here as initial review. We did a quick scan to see did they provide enough to, to, you know, to, to merit our, our deeper dive into, into the material and a, a yes, no. Assuming that they did, and I believe all of them, all of them did and passed the initial review, they moved on to phase one. And for that, we looked at a, we, we had a rubric that we'd adapted from some other related work, but customized it to the example here and looked at whether the, there was technical evidence supporting that the assessment was evidence-based, valid for this purpose, reliable and aligned to California standards. From there, we asked, could the assessment results be used to make a judgment about whether a school was making one year's growth? And if it met all of those conditions, then it makes it to the approved list. A no at any stage in the process and the assessment's not recommended for addition to the approved list. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the, I guess 12 was the number, the 12 assessments came in. I think there was a, a 13th in that when our reviewers looked at the data submitted, they, the technical evidence was a little different on their ELA side than on their math side. And so for the accounting, I think 12 became 13. With that, that was, I believe, the submissions from Let's Go Learn. The raters were trained on the rubric and we had two independent reviews conducted for each assessment. We had a third raider standing ready to conduct a review. If the first two reviews failed to agree after some discussion about their reviews. And their reviews were completed in early October. Next slide. So the technical quality rubric had a lot of different elements to it. And I, I, I'm not going to read through them here, but you can, you can see that it was pretty comprehensive in that we needed to establish validity, reliability, alignment to standards and appropriateness for different populations. Next slide. Furthermore, we reviewed for things like bias and fairness, you know, what sort of technical procedures were, were done to, to review the assessments for that. Scoring and reporting, you know, what sorts of security and data privacy procedures were in place for the assessments. So a pretty comprehensive technical quality rubric. Next slide. At the end of this process, some 13 different assessments we are putting forward for the recommended list. And these here, you can see, for those that are familiar with the periodic assessments in place in California, a lot of these will be familiar to you. You'll see here also the separate reading assessments and math assessment from Let's Go Learn I alluded to earlier. But these are the assessments. You'll also see here the inclusion of LPAC. LPAC was cited by a number of schools as a way that they track progress. And for a charter school with a large or perhaps universal English learner population, that may be an appropriate way to look at a year's growth of students, together with other measures as well. So. Next slide, please. So having walked through the academic progress indicators, I want to turn now to the post-secondary indicators. As Director Kazanis mentioned, there was concerns, and we had some of our own, about career technical ed measures and their absence from this process. However, the law is very clear on this point. Clear and convincing evidence of increases in academic achievement or strong post-secondary outcomes as defined by college enrollment, persistence, and completion rates. So as important as career tech ed measures may be, they're not part of this particular process. And I feel like it's important to call that out for the board. Next slide, please. So this is the process we brought to the post-secondary indicator review. You know, it's going to look very similar to the academic progress indicators. We were looking for data sources that were nationally recognized, valid, rigorously reviewed, reliable, externally produced. If they met those criteria, then was it a source of college enrollment persistence or completion rates? So something like, you know, a career tech ed measure. At an early stage, FAFSA participation came up as a candidate, but it needed to be a measure of college enrollment persistence or completion rates. And could it be used to compare to similar peers? And if the answers were yes along the way, then the data source is recommended. Next slide. This is the process we took. We did a scan of national practices and strategies for tracking college enrollment persistence and completion. We talked to experts on post-secondary data for California students. And we looked at the feedback that came up from our stakeholder meetings as well as what was indicated in the data landscape survey as to what charter schools were already doing to look at post-secondary indicators. So this was, in a way, more about researching and scanning. This did not have the same technical rubric as the assessments did, but rather it was subjecting the possible candidate indicators to whether they could be used to look at strong post-secondary outcomes. It's a good time to mention that where the academic progress indicators were looking for one year's growth, or one year's progress for a school, the post-secondary indicator language in statute is strong post-secondary outcomes as measured by enrollment persistence and completion relative to similar peers. So very, very different. One year's growth, an absolute standard, and then there's a sense of more of a comparative standard of strong outcomes with the post-secondary indicators. And so having done that, next slide, please. Having done that, we're recommending that these post-secondary indicators be considered for verified data. Calplus Plus, CSU Enrollment Dashboard Student Origin, Data Quest College Going Rate, National Student Clearinghouse Student Tracker, UC Admissions by School Source, and UC undergraduate graduation rates. Next slide, please. So in the course of our work, and largely driven by things we heard from the stakeholders, a couple of topics deserve additional mention. We heard a lot of concern about what's data going to be like, you know, in the 2020, 2021 academic year. And what is strong performance when there's learning loss going on as well? For the work that we were doing, it was not for us to weigh in or make a judgment on that, but we did feel it important to document that as an issue, you know, as this verified data work is going forward. A second topic was this idea of ways to reexamine data other than the way they initially come. And we had a couple of examples of that. So the Lexile Quantile Framework came up. And this is a way of reporting results. It's not an assessment per se, but it's a reporting convention, a reporting methodology, if you like. That was one. Another one that came up was core student growth percentiles. Again, not an assessment per se, but a reporting convention or a reporting methodology to generate some useful information from an existing assessment, obviously. CASP data, in the case of the core student methodology. So those, again, special topics that deserve mention, but in this case, not assessments as such. And that's the work that we did. So next slide. Yeah, happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Eric.
All right, thank you very much.
President Darling-Hammond, we have a couple more slides to go, and I can turn it over to you if that's okay.
Great.
So there are a couple other pieces of this before we go into what the addendum is proposing. The first is, this law also has a caveat in here about recognizing that the board was working at the time and still continues to work on developing and reporting a student-level growth model. And as you all know, because we've updated you, I think, at every single meeting this year, we are on track to bring forward to you in March of 2021, a student-level growth model for adoption. As a result, the CDE may bring forward changes to the verified data criteria. And the specified code section, I'll read out loud. Upon adoption of a pupil-level academic growth measure for English Language Arts and Mathematics, the State Board may reconsider criteria adopted pursuant to this subdivision. Additionally, there has been requests, and in keeping with what we've been doing with 1505, the other data elements, we wanted to make you aware of these two additional pieces. So I think it's important, as Stephanie mentioned in item 13, that we'll continue to come forward to you or provide you information memorandums on the implementation of this legislation and specifically around the verified data process as needed. And then we will, in concert with WestEd, conduct a technical assistance webinar once you've adopted the verified data as proposed or whatever you adopt with today's action. So that will be forthcoming to support the field to implement this piece of 1505. With that, I want to turn over to the item addendum. And I want to walk briefly through the changes that we are suggesting be made. The addendum, again, was posted on Wednesday. It's available under item 14. Specifically, I did read out loud already the revised recommendation about the effective date of the verified data list being January 1, 2021. When we look at the criteria to define verified data, there are no changes made to data eligibility. The suggested change is participation, changed the words "all" to instead "at least 95%." And the reason for that is it's in keeping with what is required under federal law around participation rates. So it's consistent with what we expect of our schools for our English Language Arts and mathematics assessments on our smarter balance. The other areas where we are recommending some additional changes is around data use, specifically under security, adding in some additional information, specifically the words "consistent with the test publisher's administration and test security procedures." Just again, to be very clear about expectations around security. Further, we added a section about the use of the CASP data for English Language Arts, Literacy, and Mathematics, specifically the following. Specified CASP-reported data can only be used in a manner consistent with the data reported on the CASP website and the California School Dashboard. CASP data and methodologies for analyzing CASP data that are mutually agreed upon by the chartering authority and charter school may be used to supplement dashboard results. However, CASP data may not be used to dispute the dashboard results. An additional item that we are recommending be added is around pandemic and natural disaster considerations. Specifically, the charter school may present evidence of learning disruptions due to the COVID-19 pandemic and/or natural disasters for petitions considered in the 2020, 2021 school year. And then finally, under the recommendations for academic progress indicators, the department is recommending the addition of the CASP English Language Arts and Literacy Mathematics. With that, I wanted to make sure that I acknowledged the contributions from our assessment division, originally under Michelle Sinner, who helped guide us to where we are today, and then currently under Malveng and Eric Silbert. Eric is here today. If there's technical questions that neither Eric, the other Eric Crane, nor Jenny or I can respond to. So I just wanted to acknowledge that they've been a tremendous help in this area. And with that, I will turn it over to President Darling-Hammond for the remainder of the item and for public comment.
Terrific. Thank you. Thanks for all the very, very helpful and strong work that's gone into this item and for all the additional thinking that went into the appendix. And I'm glad that you sort of referenced the fact that when we have our growth model, we will be kind of revisiting the criteria because this really came about in part because people were looking for ways to show growth. So that's going to be a good revisit very soon. The public comment slide is up. And for those who want to call in, the phone number and the access code are there. I think we should take a 10-minute break while people are queuing up for public comment so that we can kind of refresh our brains. When we come back, we'll take a moment to hear from our liaisons, then go to public comment, and then we'll move forward into the rest of the public comment and discussion. I am aiming for us to complete our work by hopefully around 1:00 at the latest. So we'll try to move things expeditiously. Let's take 10 minutes now. It's 11:35, 11:36. We'll give ourselves till 11:46. If you need a little snack too much on while we're doing this, do that as well, and we'll see you in 10 minutes. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to continue with item 14, but we need to reestablish our quorum. So Brooks, can you call the roll?
Of course. Member Sun.
Here.
Member Strauss, Vice President Strauss.
Here.
Member Rucker.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Member Patil Bronson.
Here.
Member Navo.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Glover Woods.
Here.
Member Fatah.
Here.
President Darling-Hammond.
Here.
Member Burr.
Here.
Everyone's present.
All right. So we'll soon have people queued up for public comment. I wanted to give our liaisons, members of Burr and Sun, an opportunity to do some framing comments before we take public comment. Sue?
Thank you, Lynda. First, just my deep appreciation and thanks to the department staff, the board staff, and to WestEd. I hope you could tell by the presentation that this has been not only a lengthy process, but certainly a very thorough, thoughtful, and comprehensive process to arrive at this point. Again, not an easy statute to interpret some conflicting language, but I think the department and the board came to a good spot on this. And I would just ask people to really take a look, careful look at Attachment 1. It's posted as the addendum. Cindy referred to that a couple of times. And I think that following public comment, this will be the document from which we will work for purposes of emotion. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Ting?
Yeah, I just want to also echo the good work of the staff. And the staff really embraced our continuous improvement philosophy in this process in taking in input and feedback and going back again and trying to resolve a lot of the differing opinions. And I agree that, you know, we've come to a place where I think it gives us at least a start to move forward. And I would only encourage that we continue to work on this continuous improvement aspect as we work on implementing this law.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there public comment?
Yes, at this time, we have 17 individuals in the queue for public comment. Callers, just a quick reminder, this is public comment for item 14 only. Again, item 14 only. Good afternoon. First caller, please speak your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning. This is Derek Lennox on behalf of the Association of California School Administrators. I want to start by thanking the board for the opportunity to participate in the CDE Stakeholder Group on Verified Data. The recommendations are well researched, and we support the addendum amendments, especially the 95% participation rate and test security requirement. On balance, we also appreciate that the recommendations endeavor to not overly burden authorizers in charter schools. But the other side of that coin is the need for both parties to have objective standards around using the data. We respectfully encourage the state to provide technical guidance, especially around creating outcome benchmarks and aggregating student performance data at both the student group and school level. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good morning, honorable board members and Superintendent Thurman. My name is Julia Holland, and I'm the Public Programs Manager for Green Dot Public Schools. In my role, I lead Green Dot's compliance efforts with our authorizers and state agencies. I'm calling today to urge you to include CASP data and core student growth percentiles on the state's verified data list. Seven of Green Dot's schools are currently going through a high-stakes renewal process while simultaneously navigating a data desert due to COVID-19 and the suspension of testing. Being able to include a peer-reviewed data source, such as Core Student Growth Percentile, has been invaluable to Green Dot's renewals during this time. Green Dot operates middle and high schools where students enter multiple grade levels behind. Core clearly demonstrates that our schools are accelerating growth for all students, regardless of their incoming achievement level or their zip code. I urge you to please include CASP and Core Student Growth Percentiles on this iteration of the verified data list. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, you're live.
Good morning, honorable board members and Superintendent Thurman. My name is Michael Garner, and I am Green Dot Public School Director of Data and Analytics. I've had the privilege of participating in the Department of Education's Verified Data Stakeholder Working Group. We've spent hours discussing the merits of various data sources with people who know the data most intimately. I urge you to heed the stakeholder group's recommendation and include CASP data and Core Student Growth Percentiles on the verified data list. As the highest governing board in California's education system, you have the ultimate authority to decide how we determine which schools are good schools. During a time with limited data available, Core Student Growth Percentiles have the unique ability to show which schools are accelerating student growth. unique ability to show which schools are accelerating student growth using an apples-to-apples comparison. Core is particularly helpful in highlighting the success of schools like Green Dot's schools that serve students who enter multiple grade levels behind and show significant growth once enrolled at our schools. The board will have multiple opportunities to look at the verified data list in the future, so I urge you to include CASP data and Core Student Growth Percentiles on the verified data list so schools can make the most of the data available to us and ensure good schools like ours are given a fair shot at it.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record, please.
Hello, President Darlene Hammond and members of the board. I'm Ruth Sutton with Clovis Global Academy. I urge the board to reconsider the CDE's recommendations that extend beyond statutes. The proposed verified data criteria limit the data an authorizer must consider and prescribe processes for data presentation that are so difficult as to be nearly impossible for many, especially if implemented right away without giving charters the chance to operationalize systems in preparation for renewal. Restrictions could mean that authorizers may not hear the important story of the value added by charter programs. Clovis Global Academy is a dual-language immersion charter school. Our students' gains in bilingualism and biliteracy will not show on the dashboard or CASP. However, this learning is highly valued by our families and will contribute to better lifetime outcomes for our students. The CDE should not be so confident that the verified data criteria fully captures school quality or student learning. I urge the board to only accept the list of assessments to clarify the term verified data, to remove any restrictive language that would inhibit the visibility of charter's value added.
Time.
And to consider an appropriate timeline for implementation so we do not harm public access to our schools.
Thank you, caller. Thank you. You've reached your time limit. Also, callers, a quick reminder, if you are listening to the livestream, please mute your computer while you're speaking live on the line. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hello again. This is Suzanne Cooy of the Charter Schools Development Center. The criteria need vetting, limiting CASP data to the dashboard and CASP website formats. Distance from standard, percent proficient, and scale scores are crude proxies for one year's progress, and for schools are often way off on that standard. Also, the COVID provision misses the issue. What is one year's progress for K-12 schools with mostly high-need students? We should compare to how similar students do statewide in COVID, but it's not clear what analysis the criteria even allow. At stakeholder meetings, I raise the issue that criteria might not simply operationalize statutes, that it might guide sound data use. Instead, 10 restrictions were added that don't help with the most important issues. The proposal preempts authorizers' local control to evaluate data, adds burden, is ambiguous, and goes far beyond statute, including listing post-secondary sources. See that statute calls for the board to stop assessments. This narrows the view of college and devalues the board's work.
Thank you, caller. You've reached your time limit. Thank you. Next caller, please list your name and/or state your name and affiliation for the record, please.
Hello again, Honorable Board Members and Superintendent Thurmond. My name is Helen Lopez, and I am the Manager of Data and Analytics for Green Dot Public Schools. I am calling today to urge you to include CASP data and Core Student Growth Percentiles on the verified data list. I spend hours poring over data with our principals to support them in their efforts to accelerate student growth. Unlike other K-12 education systems, Green Dot only operates middle schools and high schools. Students enter our schools multiple grade levels behind, and our schools do everything in their power to catch them up. Schools like ours need multiple measurements to show true growth happening every day. Unfortunately, there is limited data available due to COVID-19 and the suspension of testing. Core's Student Growth Percentiles offer a readily available data source that clearly measures a school's ability to grow students. I urge the board to amend its verified data list and include available data sources such as CASP data and Core Student Growth Percentiles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, you're live on the line. Are you there? Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, you're live on the line. Are you available? Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
My name is Tim Warner. I'm the Director of Alder Grove Charter School in Eureka, California. We largely serve high-need students who will not choose the traditional college route. This statute's intention seems to be adopting assessments to be used for renewal criteria, so I'm concerned that the discussion is turned towards considering post-secondary success using a narrow list, including the National Student Clearinghouse and very traditional college data sources. This limited information unfairly ignores our student data from those who serve in the military, participate in career technical education, and apprenticeships and internships not tracked by the clearinghouse. In other words, our authorizer will not be allowed to consider our schools' above-average progress on post-secondary educational paths compared to those of similar peers. Please consider allowing flexibility to capture the important post-secondary outcomes that our students need if you value that work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Caller, are you on the line? Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Embrica Rocha, and I represent San Diego Unified. We submitted a letter on item 14 that requested the addition of the CASP to the list of verified data. We thank you for the submission of the addendum, which adopts our request, and urge your approval of the item with the addendum. We also highlighted in our letter the need to adopt regulations that implement the use of verified data and the need for technical guidance on the use of verified data. While item 14 briefly addresses issues of comparability and the longitudinal progress, we encourage the discussion on the impact to forthcoming regulations that should contemplate the use of the assessments as a part of the implementation of AB 1505. The regulations are necessary to ensure the effective implementation, ensure clarity on the use of assessments, and ensure authorizers are able to perform meaningful analysis of any alternative measures of academic progress within a charter school. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Romel Antle. I'm calling for the California Charter School Association. I want to first thank CDE, the staff, and specifically Kerry Lips for the work that you all have done in this entire process. It has been a truly collaborative process where the stakeholder input has been taken into consideration, as exemplified through the addition of the addendum to add CASP and the Core Student Growth Percentage in this consideration. We do want to remind the board that the board does have the ability to revisit this in the future as we move forward, as we know that COVID-19, in addition to other data restrictions, will necessitate perhaps that the board will reconsider this as we move forward. So we look forward to this collaborative process as we continue to go through the implementation of 1505, 1507, and urge your approval with the addendum. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Jubba, speaking on behalf of the California Teachers Association. CTA appreciates the stakeholders' work and the extra work put into the item 14 addendum. And while the statutory deadline is looming, there are policy issues that must be rectified prior to moving forward. Many of the recommended assessments are not valid for the purpose of high-stakes decisions and are unable to aggregate growth at the school or district level. The use of the CASP and LPAC can be considered with the guardrails regarding data use procedures in the addendum. Ed code is clear, but the baseline is one year's progress for each year in school. That is very different than just one year's growth for some students. Test secured must go beyond affirmation. Outreach to authorizers and charters must be comprehensive but ongoing. The CTA believes that the issues I have outlined must be addressed prior to the adoption of the recommended list so that it is in alignment with California standards and accountability.
Time. Thank you, caller. Thank you for your comment. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members. This is Eric Premack with the Charter Schools Development Center. We appreciate the recent addition of the CASP data to the list, but we have a number of outstanding concerns that remain unaddressed that were in our letter, and some new ones, particularly the confusingly worded restrictions on CASP data. And we're also remain alarmed by the prohibition on the use of career technical and military participation data. We'll note that Webster's Dictionary definition of the word "college" includes instruction in vocational and technical fields, and that any other interpretation we think is absurd and bad policy. We urge you to reopen these issues and reengage the stakeholder group before finalizing these regulations or these lists. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
David Patterson, California Charter Authorizing Professionals, otherwise known as CCAP. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board today. We appreciate the complexity of this issue. We have submitted a letter. I have three quick points to make. First, we appreciate the addendum, the inclusion of CASP data. Our second point is about supports needed for all verifiable data sources. The data sources being recommended by WestEd and any other additional data sources that are included in the final action by the state board need to be accompanied by the technical resources and guidance to ensure that they're appropriate and reliable use. None of these assessments were originally created to be used as a critical source of data to support high-stakes authorizing decisions. While authorizers are committed to meeting these difficult responsibilities, it's important that they have the support they need to ensure they can use these and other data sources in an appropriate and defensible manner. Second, I recognize the need...
Time. Thank you, caller. Your time has ended. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Thurmond, my name is Dolores Duran Flores, and I represent the California School Employees Association. We share the concerns raised by CTA or teacher partners. It's our understanding that the publishers indicated that six of the recommended assessments don't have an option to aggregate at subgroup or school level. This puts authorizers in a position of having to conduct a level of analysis they may not be able to provide. We're also concerned about test security and believe charter schools should be required to provide the authorizer with a report outlining all information about test security and regularities in security. We urge you to address these issues prior to adopting the recommendations for you. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Rich Harrison. I'm the CEO of Lighthouse Community Public Schools here in East Oakland. I want to just share that one of our schools fell into the low track, and we're up for renewal this fall. We're in deep east Oakland, where when you look at the neighborhood schools, 12 out of the 14 schools in the neighborhood that are public schools would have fallen into the low track per the calculation of AB 1505. Additionally, in the two ZIP codes we serve, we have COVID rates that are three to four times of that of Alameda County. We were able to work with the district to get a positive two-year recommendation per 1505 because we were able to share our core data as well as our MAP data, and I'm glad these are on the list. However, we need to make sure that the language in the language of the assessment criteria is clearer and stronger. I suggest removing some of these restrictions so that we ensure there's flexibility in both the charter school as well as the authorizers to better assess the continuity of their program relative to the neighborhoods and the communities they serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, caller. This concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you very much. At this point, we are open to have a discussion with the board, and I will look for hands to go up. I would maybe start us off with one clarifying question, and then others can chime in. Cindy, don't go away. One of the things that... Thank you very much. And once again, thanks for all of the work that went into this. One of the questions that came up was about the acknowledgement of other post-secondary outcomes in addition to college-going. Is there... In the way that this is framed, is there, as you view it, a prohibition against using, considering other data like that?
I've just changed the slide deck to Slide 16, which provides the language in education code, which we guided our work. It says it defines post-secondary outcomes as college enrollment, persistence, and completion rates equal to similar peers. I believe Eric Crane covered this a bit in his presentation as well. So we felt constrained by this language. We know that there are technical schools out there, and that would be considered part of the college enrollment piece. And I'm also going to turn this now over to Judy Sias to provide some additional explanation.
Yeah. My question is really about whether the law prohibits us from using other data beyond those that are defined.
Well, the law also specifies that verified data must be nationally recognized, valid, peer-reviewed, and reliable sources that are externally produced. And I think the board remembers from some of our many discussions around the college career indicator that there are not a lot of career indicators that meet that part of the definition either. So there are two constraints.
Yeah, so let me just be sure I'm asking my question clearly and that I understand the answer fully. Is the law written in such a way that the authorizer and the board are prohibited from considering any additional data beyond those that they've defined in this?
The charter... The board cannot adopt verified data that does not meet the definition that is on the slide, the state board.
Right. And I guess my... I'm still going to try one more time to be sure I understand. Are we prohibited from considering in authorizations or reviews any data that are not verified? Maybe that's the way to ask.
Charter can certainly present data that they feel shows performance levels, but whether or not the authorizer has to consider it is another story. I mean, that's part of the reason for the verified data is to cabin a little bit what type of data that is considered at renewal in order to... I think we've talked about the data wars over the years, so I think the intent was to emphasize college, and I think there's a clear intent to emphasize college.
I think at the beginning of your statement, you said what I understood the law to be saying, which is that you could, that charters could provide other data. The authorizer must consider verified data. It's...
Repped.
It is optional whether they consider other information that the charter says, so to speak. Is that right?
That's correct.
So it's not prohibited, but it is not required to be considered.
That's correct.
I think that's right. Okay. I just wanted to be sure that we're clear on that because this evolved initially as a way to... The charters have traditionally provided a lot of information about the way in which they do their business. They're asked to, you know, show a variety of inputs and processes and outcomes. I don't think this takes things off the table for a presentation, but it does not guarantee if it's not verified data that it will always be considered because it may be difficult to interpret if it's outside these parameters. I'll now open up to other questions. I see Eileen, Ting, Patricia, and that's it for now. Eileen?
Thank you, President Darlene Hammond. I wanted to follow up on the post-secondary verified data as well, and I appreciate Judy and Cindy and your clarifying. My concern, and I guess this is in AB 1505, is that schools are not only required to show academic growth K-12, it sounds to me like they're also required to get their kids into college, show some persistence and completion rates beyond their time with the students as compared to similar schools, similar peers, but that's not defined. And that's not a standard... schools, similar peers, but that's not defined. And that's not a standard that we have held for accountability. When we've looked at college and career indicators, we've looked at A to G completion. So, this adds a new layer, and for many charter schools, I think they're serving, as we heard from some of the public comments, a challenging population that we're trying to get high school completion and some other post-secondary preparation available. So, I just, so I just wanted to talk a little bit more about that and then ask if we could, or if we are planning to revisit this like in 12 to 18 months as this evolves over time. Is this an area that concerns me since it's complicated, once students are no longer with the K, the high school, for example, students three or four years later have them graduate, but they're not even seeing the kids or supporting them anymore. So, I'll turn that over to Cindy first and maybe Judy for some comment on that.
And can I piggyback another question on it that will just again give us the framework? Is it correct that schools do not have to present all of this data? These are data that they may present, and this provides a way by which they are looked at?
The authorizer shall consider this data. That's what the statute
If it is presented, but are you, are you framing this as a school must present these data?
Right before the two, the two items, it says, "In addition to the state and local indicators, the chartering authority shall consider clear and convincing evidence showing either the following: A, the school achieved measurable increases in academic achievement as defined by at least one year's growth; and B, the post-secondary, strong post-secondary outcomes that you see on the slide." So, I don't have this together on one slide, but that is the preface to what you see on the screen.
And you're interpreting that as saying that the, the schools must provide additional data beyond that, that
I was trying to respond to Member Strauss's question because this, this language says either of the following, and she, she combined the two as the one year's, one year's progress as well as, at least that's what I understood her question to be, and I, I mean, I know Judy's here.
Please say it. I will ask mine later. Go ahead.
So, Cindy, are you saying, so for example, alter, schools that are having students that may not have been successful in high school, charter schools, they're trying to get them to complete high school and have some post-secondary options, they can use academic achievement and completion data? They're not necessary?
And this doesn't apply to DAS schools. Remember, none of this applies to DAS schools.
Those are removed from this entire process. The DAS, the alternative schools defined as DAS that have been accepted into that process are removed from this entire process.
Okay, but a K-12 non-DAS school would have to consider how their students do after them as an indicator of how well they prepared them. Is that correct?
Either, either that academic measurable, they achieve measurable increases in academic achievement, and then second piece is the strong post-secondary outcomes. It doesn't say both. It says either.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Ting?
So, yeah, I'm going to drill down a little bit more in trying to address the concerns with some of the call callers around the narrowness of the list that we would be approving for ver, under verified data sources. So, and I think it might be helpful to maybe have staff distinguish the difference between the, the lowest performing tier of schools because if, looking at the law, it sounds like that the authorizer is prohibited from renewing a charter school in that level unless there is verified data, and then further it says, "No data sources other than those adopted by the State Board pursuant to Paragraph Two shall be used as verified data." So, in essence, the only list of verified data that can even be considered for that lower tier is what is defined by the State Board, what we will be approving. Now, for the middle group, where I am unclear is whether there is discretion in looking at more information than that because in that section, it does reference verified data, but in it goes into subdivision C, which is the whole section that talks about what verified data means, and also includes the paragraph, "No data sources other than those adopted by the State Board pursuant to Paragraph shall be used as verified data." So, while I know I'm hearing that, that there could be other sources that A, an authorizer can consider, that's not the case for the lowest performing school, and I don't think it's very clear for the middle group of charter schools. So, I don't know if there's anyone who might want to be able to do that, and excuse the phone behind me.
The law's not clear. We, we know this. I, I'm just, the law is not clear. I think what WestEd and CD have done is to try to, as we've talked about, work within the parameters of the law and identify a broad range of assessments that can be used. They, as you heard from Eric, they did a very thorough work of identifying data. I did not hear anything from any of the callers of other pieces of data that should be added other than the college and career, which we've been talking about. But the goal was certainly to provide as much discretion and as much choice. We worked, we did the survey of hundreds of charter schools of all the assessments that they are using so that we would make sure, WestEd did, in order to help make sure that all the assessments that charters identified were put through this process, and then that, again, that was the addition for the CASP data piece. So, I, I think the revisiting point is certainly a good one. I, we, we didn't put a date certain in the item to revisit, but certainly no one is thinking that this list doesn't, you know, I, I think everyone knows that we will want to revisit this at some point in the future as more data becomes available, but we have the January 1st deadline. And I know authorizers and charter schools, yeah, as we heard from the testimony, they're ready for this and need this as we move forward in the renewal season.
I, I do understand that, and I think we, this may be the start because of the deadline. I just want to make sure, because it is unclear, that we aren't limiting to what, we're limited by the law and we're limited by this list, and the authorizers are limited by the list that we adopt. So, and, and we know that in consideration of the renewal of schools, it's multifaceted. It don't, I'm not, I know that we need to follow what the law says. I think that also that implementing, the implementation of this is very difficult and very constraining when we've got various aspects. So, I just want to be clear that while we're saying, no, of course, authorizers can consider other data. I'm not sure that the law actually allows that.
We can certainly go back through and look at doing some guidance, and this might be something we'll add to our list of things that we're looking at as we're doing regulations.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Patricia?
Thank you very much. I listened with great interest to not only the detailed analysis and presentation from WestEd, but also the concerns that were raised by the stakeholders. So, I want to first of all, thank and acknowledge the stakeholders for the information and the concerns that you raised. You know, you've heard me say this before in response often to the stakeholder testimony that many people are often frustrated that you only have a minute to speak, but there was a lot of very powerful assertions made, particularly about this particular process. And I also want to thank the staff at WestEd for the work that they did in providing this advice, both to the board and the department, for us to work on this. So, here's the thing. There, again, I want, I want to hearken back to what I said earlier, that we are at the, we are starting to implement this, and there are going to be a lot of questions about what it is we are doing, and while there is a goal not to make a, take a purposeful misstep, I think that there needs to be an assumption that we need to revisit it. So, the first thing I'm going to suggest is, in the same way that we keep saying, we need to revisit our 20-year-old board policy concerning non-classroom-based charters, and we never get around to it. Since we know that this is something we, we absolutely need to review, I would like to suggest we amend the recommendation to include a date certain or a timeline for doing that review so that we can revisit. And I'm not just suggesting that because of salutary neglect on some other policies that have allowed to languish, but primarily because while many people feel that the verified, the list of verified data that the board is about to approve is very narrow, I am amazed at how broad and how long the list is, and I'm using the word broad on purpose just so that it's antithetical or the exact opposite to what others have said about how narrow it is, primarily because we need to be able to understand not only how these items on this list will work, but in concert to all the multiple metrics that are being proposed for us to consider, you know, are some going to work better than others? And we need to have the flexibility because while everybody's concerned about what the statute doesn't allow us to do, I actually think the statute is giving us a great deal of flexibility to consider and revise this definition of the contents of verifiable data over time. I think we have that flexibility. And while the statute didn't explicitly include career technical education, it didn't exclude it either. You know, it must be reminded that the University of California has done a lot of work to identify how career technical education courses meet the A to G requirements or enrollment or admission consideration to their programs. So, while the statute doesn't explicitly include it, it doesn't exclude it either, and it doesn't mean at some point down the road that the board can't look at metrics and ways to include career technical education. We just don't understand and don't have the, the understanding about how to use this metric at this time to do it. So, I would like to recommend that we take a look at how the statute gives us some flexibility to make this decision as mandated by January 1st, but also to look at how to study this, how to monitor it, and come back to revisit this decision we made. This is not a decision that has to be carved in cement. This is an op, or marble, or whatever other hard subject substance like granite that people carve things in, but I think there's an opportunity for this to be a living activity, a living document, a living policy that can be revised, improved, and enhanced over time, but we have to be purposeful and planned for revisiting it.
Thank you. I think we're going to go on to Kim.
Sorry, I just had a clarifying question about, and this follows up on your earlier comment around whether Core District data would be permissible still under this, but not required. I think it's the same as the secondary, post-secondary data that we were discussing before, but wanted to confirm.
This is, this is Cindy. So, it, that piece is covered under the data criteria use that we've added for CASP, specifically CASP data and methodologies for analyzing CASP data, CASP data that are mutually agreed upon by the chartering authority and charter school may be used to supplement dashboard results. As you heard from WestEd, Core is not an assessment and it's considered, you know, this is the way we've captured that information. So, that's in the addendum number eight, under data use.
Thanks. I've already spoken, so if other people want to make comments, I don't want to usurp their time, but I just wanted to
You are, you are the last one in the queue right now.
Okay. Well, okay, so I will just say at the beginning, I'm prepared to make a motion ready, but I do also, I just want to kind of reinforce both what Ting and Eileen said about the post-secondary outcomes. I do think both, I think Eileen's point that they're really much stronger or more rigorous in my reading of them than what we have in the CCI for all schools, that we don't require schools to be responsible for persistence rates in college when they have no control over those students once they've left. So, I just, I think we might want to think carefully about that definition in statute and see if there's more flexibility that can be obtained. I also think Ting's concern about the way, the interaction of those sections in the statute makes it appear on a close read that you cannot use metrics other than those that are defined in statute and other than those that we might be adopting here. So, I think, again, that is ripe for additional consideration as we move forward, whether it's a statutory change or some kind of clarification in our regulations because I do think, and I'm very sympathetic to the callers and the commenters in our letters about schools that are serving, and these are not DAS schools, Cindy, so I understand what you're saying, but regular high schools who are sending kids onto apprenticeships, onto the military, onto other post-secondary opportunities that are not defined as college. So, I think we, we just want to be open to that. And to Member Rucker's comments, I agree with you. I think we will, for better or worse, be revisiting this regularly, but I, I think we can get commitment, especially from the department and the board staff, that for sure we need to revisit it once we adopt our growth model because that will have an interaction with, with some of these things as well. So, I agree with you. I think we need to keep coming back to this and refine it as needed. So, with that, Linda, I'm ready to make a motion that we adopt the department's revised recommendation as outlined in the addendum in Attachment 1 of Item 14.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you very much. Further discussion by the board? I'm going to add just one comment and ask Cindy to go back to the previous slide that you were showing, which I think was not that one, it's the one that says, "The authorizer shall consider for low performing." Low performing is the title. There we go. Let's consider verified data. I think just to reinforce the point that I think Sue was making, and we will likely want to revisit this, we have a very thoughtfully selected group of assessments that have met, you know, criteria that are well laid out. The question of when authorizers can or must consider certain kinds of data and when charter schools must provide those data is one that I think we'll want to clarify as we go along. I know that this particular piece of the law was written to say that if a charter school wanted to present additional data in that context, that the authorizer must consider it, did not require charters to have to present additional data beyond what is routinely provided. So, the question about what is required and when and how other things can be considered is one that is Sue and Ting and others have noted, we should clarify that. But in the meantime, we have a very strong, well-defined list of assessments that people can begin to think about using, and I certainly support the recommendation. Any other discussion from board members before we vote? Matt, your hand went up, I think?
Yep. I just want to thank fellow board members for the comments, and it really helped clarify things. And I think it would, before we vote, I just want to thank Cindy and CD team. This is really tough when you're having to balance so many stakeholders. You can tell that they worked really hard to try to find a means so that we could move forward on this particular item, and I appreciate their efforts.
Yeah, and it's a challenging law to interpret, and I think we're well on the way. Any other comments from board members? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Brooks?
Member Sun?
Aye.
Vice President Strauss?
Aye.
Member Rucker?
Yes.
Member Rodriguez?
Aye.
Member Patil Brownson?
Yes.
Member Navo?
Aye.
Member McQuillan?
Yes.
Member Glover Woods?
Aye.
Member Fatah?
Aye.
President Darling Hammond?
Aye.
Member Burr?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you Cindy and the entire team for all of the important work that went into these last couple of items. We did We did general public comment yesterday, so I now adjourn our November 2020 State Board of Education meeting at 12:30 6:00 PM. Thank you and I look forward to seeing you all in the new year at our January 2021 meeting.